Very good letter on the airport.
I was planning to give a presentation. It was like this. This is what we have. We got a lot of letters, there were those communications. There were areas that were scary, there were areas that were, you know, places that were bad, that were, you know, like today. There was all packaged. So, I'm doing this one as a father. But I did happen to hear it. Yeah.
Yeah. You know, still on the fence of whether or not any...
Hey Laurie? 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 Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen. Okay.
Yeah.
I feel it's cold in here.
Yeah.
But we aren't...
Hold the sustainability framework. I'll put your comments on.
Okay, so I think we're ready to get started. And if you'd all join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please. Note for the record that all council members are present. Thank you. And then we have a report from closed session.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. The council directed the labor negotiator, I'm sorry, the real estate negotiator as to what direction to take. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have an agenda and we would like to add that we will close in memory of Johnny Gomez, Barbara Vernest, and Vernist.
Vernist. Vernist, yeah.
And Nino Mizetti. Any other changes?
I'd like one addition, Madam Mayor. After adoption of a agenda, I have an announcement for Veterans Day.
Okay.
And then I had one other request. I guess this is under, maybe, you know, see if council has an appetite for this one, but put new business in front of public hearings to do the ordinance of six O T, six O two, waiving the first reading, the legislation regarding tobacco product. I know we've discussed this, I think, at two meetings and it's gone late into the night and these folks from the county have showed up there and sat through our, all of our deliberations on the stuff and I'd like to see if we're able to get them out here earlier so they don't have to stay. I think a lot of people are also here for...
Sure, unless there, I know there's, at least some people I know are planning on coming for that item and I don't see them here yet, so I hope that they're listening or, you know, that they'll be able to make it in time for that discussion.
Okay. So is that, is that amenable?
I think it's amenable and to go ahead and move that, I think it is certainly where we have more of our citizens here and more slips about that, so I would be happy to move that.
New business in front of continued public hearing. Okay?
Okay. Is that a motion?
Well, I don't, I don't even, unless anybody else has...
Any other changes?
Yeah.
Nope.
Motion to adopt agenda as amended?
Second.
Second.
I think Ray beat you to it, so...
Well.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Co-sinkons.
Thank you. And that brings us to oral communications, number one, and I have one...
Actually, we had the announcement.
Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. You had an announcement.
Yeah, I have an announcement. This, coming Wednesday is Veterans Day, November eleventh, and it's always on November eleventh, and it is a city holiday. So on Thursday, when City Hall is open, we're going to have a flag raising in honor of veterans. And we have a lot of veterans here in Brisbane, so at eight fifteen AM, we'd like to honor any and all veterans to come and join the ceremony of flag raising and afterwards we're going to have maybe some coffee and some healthy snacks like donuts or something. And just celebrate Veterans Day for all those who have served and are serving right now in armed forces, so that'll be Thursday at eight fifteen AM. And that's it.
Thank you. And that brings us to oral communications, number one, for items that are not on the agenda. And I do want to let people know, we've got a large group of people who want to speak later in the meeting, and so I would hope that everyone can keep their comments brief and to the point. And with that, I have one slip, and that's from Michael Barnes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Michael Barnes, I'm a Brisbane resident. I have three documents to give you tonight. One is a letter from my wife regarding the smoking ordinance and how it, if her brother lived here, would impact him. Another one is a letter she wrote about the old VWR site. And since I know how much reading you do and, and how hard it is to make through all the stuff you have to read, I have a third document. It is very short, very brief, and it says one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars on it, and this is the proceeds from T-shirt sales from the family festival and should go towards building up the skate park.
All right.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Michael, yeah.
And we will turn these over to the city clerk who can give copies of these documents to the council members, please. Not the check. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Dennis Bussie?
Wow. Money.
And who says government doesn't pay?
It's for the skateboard park.
You're not the treasurer.
So it's another nickel for the skateboard park, I think that's what it was for.
That's it. What I'm here for, I don't know the protocol, tonight on the agenda is smoking. I'm a senior. And all the seniors are moaning and bitching about some very important subjects come very late in the night and they're asleep, and they're annoyed that they couldn't participate by hearing it, they don't have computers to look it up later. So what's the protocol for me as an example tonight, say, can we bring the smoking issue forward? Who makes that decision? Do I do it at oral communications, the day ahead or what? So that's question one, is can the smoking issue be brought forward tonight? If not, how do I do it in the future?
We, changing the agenda is up to the council.
Okay.
If you can ask in advance, that's always good, but if you approach one of the council members before that, then they can make that suggestion to the council or not. We have, in this case, moved that item forward, so it will be earlier in the agenda and, but in the future, that's what I would recommend doing.
Okay. Can I just call the City Hall, Sherry, and suggest it, and she gets ahold of you?
And she would let the current, the mayor and the council know that there was a request from the...
Because I don't want to bother you at home or look for you in a bar on the streets. Get it done ahead of time. Okay. There was another issue, but it's already slipped my mind, so I'll, I'll be back tonight.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who'd like to speak? Then we will move on to presentations, and this is a presentation from city staff on preparedness for El Nino conditions.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Portem, council members, good evening. Yes, this is going to be a brief presentation on the El Nino storm preps or what we think of as in public works, that stuff that we do every winter, but people aren't very interested in unless we have the probability of much higher than usual rainfalls coming at us. So one of the first things that we do every year is we go out and we start cleaning the six hundred plus catch basins that we have out there in the city. You've seen that large Vector truck we have? That's, it's used oftentimes as a sewer vacuum truck, but this time of year, we use it to clean out all those catch basins. We also go out and clean all of the trash capture devices that we've installed in those. We've had conversation over a couple of meetings about the requirements imposed on us by the San Francisco Regional Water Quality Control Board specifically to limit litter getting into the bay, and so we've installed a hundred of these devices. By the end of this fiscal year, we're going to have two hundred of them in there. A little bit more extensive maintenance required to get through and keep these things clean, but it's all for a good purpose to try and keep trash out of the bay, but at the same time, we need to make sure that they're not blocked or occluded when we have heavy rainfall because then we could potentially have flooding. Beyond that, we're going out, we're surveying the public trees, those, the trees that we're responsible for, our urban forest, we're trimming and removing those as necessary. We'd like to get to those before they fall down on their own accord, and we've actually seen some of that going on this year. It's interesting, it, it's not just regular dying, a lot of the eucalyptus trees we're finding are so dried out that they're just giving up the ghost on the inside, that they're very much just like dry cardboard and they're not able to hold themselves up anymore. So we're trying to identify those trees and other species before it becomes a problem. We have to prep our winter equipment, of course, once, one of the things, we go out, we've got a bunch of chainsaws, we have to get the chainsaws tuned up, sometimes you have to sharpen the, the chains themselves, you have to buy new chains, you don't think about it, but when you get out there in the middle of the night and it's raining and that's why trees have fallen over, you really want a chainsaw that starts and that will actually cut through the tree so you can remove it and open a road. We go out and repro, excuse me, procure winter supplies, and that's one of the things really that we've accelerated because of El Nino. Normally, we go through about two thousand sandbags in the winter. This year, we're going to have four thousand sandbags. We bring in rolls of that plastic Visqueen, we have tons of sand that we park and we put out in the courtyard. We also make sandbags available to the public, you may have noticed it when you came in tonight. This year, we've transitioned the sandbags back to City Hall. We thought that putting them a little closer to where our residents live and also putting them in a lighted area would be a slightly better situation, so they're right outside City Hall now and we'll be making that announcement through our various public media events. We also prepare what we call our extreme weather response trucks. This is a procedure we came up with about ten years ago where we take one of our flatbed trucks and we prep it specifically for an emergency response, so it's got supplies that are not unique perhaps to the water, under the sewer team, but it's unique to having to go out and deal with an emergency in the middle of the night. And we also have two other trucks that we protocol, depending upon what sort of situation we have coming on. If we know we're having a high wind event, we prep a truck specifically for responding to downed trees. If we know we're going to have a really heavy rain event, we have a truck that, in addition to the first one, we, we prepare specifically for responding to flooding and such in the neighborhood. We also go out and we make sure that arrangements are in place with our tree maintenance and our general contractors. We know that we're going to get overwhelmed, that happens sometimes when you only have six to eight employees available at the max, so we know that we want to have our local contractors available, and they, and they've been really, really good about doing that and coming out and helping us. We've done some retaining wall installation, if you've been down the backside of San Bruno as you're going out of town, just before you get to Gladys, you'll see that we've, we have finally removed that very chic Visqueen look that we had been rocking on that hillside for about the last year. We've got a nice retaining wall up there and we're certainly happy to do that. We've got one more further down that, that we're still trying to work on, but we're having some challenges. There's a SFPUC water line easement through there and, as always, it's, it's subject to some sort of negotiation. We're trying to make sure the hillside's safe, but we're also trying to make sure that we don't potentially damage a, a water line that's vitally important as well. We've been out, we've been fortifying the storm drain inlets in some of the canyons. I, I know Councilmember Conway saw some of the work that was going on in Costanos late one night. It's good to have local contractors that are trying to bang the work out, I think the crew is out there working until about six thirty one night to try and get this done. We've also done some work at first. What we found there is that the canyons, as you would expect, when they start, when they start raining, they capture a lot of the water from the mountain, that's why they're there, right? That's, that's what nature is telling us, that's why there's a cutout in that side of the mountain, this is where the water has always come. But we're finding that the inlets were getting overwhelmed easily, so when I say fortify, what I mean is we went it through, we cleaned them, we scraped out, we put a channel back where we wanted it to be, and then we put larger sized riprap in there so that when the water comes through, we're going to be able to manage the flow, and we're also putting in these grates so that we can catch debris as it comes in and make sure that it doesn't flood. And then the last thing that we're doing, and really I think it's the thing that I believe is going to help us the most, and the council will recall that earlier this year, you approved the city entering into a countywide public works mutual aid agreement. It's very, very similar to the agreement that's currently in place with police and fire, but it's, it's going to be the first time in decades in this county where all of the cities have agreed to share, voluntarily share their public works resources to a neighbor if that neighbor has gotten to the point where they are either at or are in imminent danger of exhausting their own resources. So part of what's happening, there's a group of the public works directors that are out. We just got the county to approve it just a few weeks ago, the county was the last agency to approve the resolution because they're kind of the, the linchpin for it, but now there, there's a few public works directors that are, we're working very hard and we're trying to work very fast before the end of December, and we're setting up the protocols for, you know, who do you call when you need help? So when you're, when you've exhausted your resources, what's the protocol for calling? What are those resources going to be? We're trying to define them. We're using some of the same language and such that we've used here in the city of Brisbane saying that, hey, if we're going to, if there's an extreme weather event, we're going to put out a notice, we're going to ask all of the agencies to please put aside one truck that's, that's stocked with this sort of materials, and if you have one person available, that's great. And part of the beauty of that is it's not over burdensome for any entity, even a smaller city such as ourself, the way we've got this categorized is, I think that unless we're in the midst of a real disaster, we would be able to send a truck and an employee to help out a neighbor that was in a disaster. So we're really looking forward to, to that being in place, not looking forward to having utilize it, but I'd, I'd be much happier to, to have it in place and never use it. So that's the end of my report, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
I have one. So Randy, I see that we've done the work at the inlets on the bottom of the canyons, Glen Park, Sheer Point, Costanos Canyon. What's the shape of the canyons inside? Because that's where we usually have trees fall and debris and stuff like that. It usually will come down and hit those catch basins and then you have Beaver Dam, so to speak.
Right.
And that's when problems really start happening. So what's the shape of the canyons on the upper reaches, like, you know, trees and dead trees and stuff like that? Have you assessed that or...
Well, you, I mean, you know, honestly, sir, in, in most cases, the larger trees are actually kind of good things because what they do is they create sort of a mini stilling basin for us, is that instead of allowing the water to just come roaring down the hillside at maximum velocity, th- those barriers slow it down, and so it lets it build up a little bit behind it and then it lets a smaller amount come through, so it's, it's effectively creating a settling basin, if you will, so that way, some of the finer stuff that's in there drops out, so it's less likely to clog the storm drain basin. And there is, you know, agreeably, there's going to be some of the heavier stuff that comes down the hill, but that's why what we've designed is when you get to the catch basin itself, we, I'm trying to think of a, a word that would make sense to me, we call it a trash rack, because that's, that's really what it is. So what you have is upstream of the catch basin, you have a series of flat steel pipes that are put at an angle like this, they're facing me, and, and what that does is as the debris comes down the hill, it catches up on those, and that's where we find it. And the reason the trash racks are designed that way, you know, in a large scale mechanical plant, if you were in a wastewater plant or something, there would be a conveyor type piece of equipment that would grab that stuff and pull it off. In Brisbane, it's called a maintenance worker, so our maintenance workers go around during the storm drain and they reach out, they pull a, a heavy duty metal rake out of the truck, and you just reach down, you grab that stuff, you slough it off, put it to the side, and you've restored the capacity of your basin, so. It doesn't directly answer your question, but I, I think it tells you how we're planning on dealing with it.
Yeah, I, I know in ninety seven, I used to carry a rake in my car, you know, for that, and I'd go by Costanos Canyon, I would check it when it was heavy, raining real heavy and pull the rake out and do it. Is there a way that we could possibly mount one of those heavy rakes there on, on top of the catch basin itself where, or do you want people to come by and actually do it?
So, we, we've had the adopted drain program out for a number of years, and we still have some people participating in that. I, I think as we go along, what I, what I'd prefer to see is that we have people agree to participate in that program because then they sort of, they don't sort of, they self-assign to a catch basin, they say, okay, that's the catch, catch basin that's closest to my house, the city gives me a rake. All we want those people to do is if, it's in a rainstorm, it's usually the first couple of storms is where we have the problems.
Right.
Because what happens is you inevitably get heavy wind and heavy rain, and then it just takes all the foliage off the trees, and then that wants to gather and it's getting pushed down the stream and it stays on top of the catch basin and clogs the grate. So all we need them to do is just pluck that off, throw it on top of the sidewalk, throw it out of the, the way of the water flowing in the gutter, and you've restored the capacity instantly. It, it's literally a three minute operation.
Yeah. Okay.
Sir.
Perhaps we can make a public announcement about the restoring or the reminding people about the adopt the drain program.
That, that's a great idea, ma'am, I'll, I'll get with Ms. Chung on that and have that get out.
Yeah, I have one question from a neighbor of mine. I know that we provide, as you just said earlier, sandbags, but she was asking about drain rock. Her house is very adjacent to sewer easement and she felt that, you know, there was insufficient drain rock or it washed away or whatever, I don't know. And so, and she's an older woman and, you know, not too easy for her to go and get a load of drain rock, and so the question she asked me was, is there any, is, is that an issue that you've ever looked at, and if so, what, what thoughts do you have about it?
So we, we've never thought about delivering drain rock, sir, that's a new one on me in fifteen years. I, I always, I always catch a new one. But it's Brisbane. If she turns in a service request or she calls down and talks to Diane, we'll, we'll figure out a way to make it happen. It's, it's one citizen, it's one senior who, who's having a challenge with that, we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Sir.
Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Randy.
That moves us to the consent calendar, which is to approve the monthly investment report of August thirty first, two thousand fifteen, item B to adopt ordinance six oh one, waiving the second reading on the council, city council salaries, and item C acceptance of the final Bayland sustainability framework.
I'd like to remove item C, please.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
Me too, me three.
Okay. We all want to talk about the sustainability framework, and so can I have a motion to...
So move for items A and B.
A and B? Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And lead us off on item C.
Yeah, first, I'd like to commend my colleagues on the council and for all the commissions and committees who participated in this and specifically on the council, Ray and Cliff, for your work on this. I know you guys spent many, many hours on this and...
That's six years, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think Ray, I think, I think our conversation on the beginning of this started ten years ago.
Right.
And to really get this going, and it kind of took a while to get it going and then, and get it assembled and get the committee together and then work on it and then come up with a body of work that is really, it, it's actually an enjoyable reading document, too. And, and seeing in there that it is going to be a living document, because we know things are going to change, you know, in the next twenty or so years, and so this is like the beginning of something that's going to really evolve. And appreciate the hard work and the vision that's gone into this. Of course, that doesn't go without a couple of quibbles. So I only have two, though.
All right.
Fair enough.
So pages in there.
Okay, page eighteen, this is the small ones, and you guys, you guys probably should have known this, I'm teasing you. On recommended key performance indicators, it says, number two, at a minimum, all buildings shall meet current Cal Green Tier Two standards for energy usage currently set at thirty percent below the prevailing code, preferably energy use intensity, EUI, targets set are KW, H slash SF slash year. Now, I think that stands for kilowatt hours per square foot per year. I don't think a lot of people would understand exactly what that stands for, so maybe we should spell that out, and that's my suggestion for that page.
All right.
Because you have all the other acronyms pretty well identified throughout.
I'm surprised you didn't pick that up, right?
Yeah. The only other thing is that actually on page, oh man, I had it on page sixty-two, I must have wrote down the wrong page because it's not on there.
I think we already fixed it, Clark.
What's that? No.
Whatever it is.
Okay. All right, let's go to page sixty, then. On page sixty, where it says urinals, and, and we're kind of going with what's in our ordinance right now.
Right.
But they actually have waterless urinals, and I think in a development like that, you'd probably want to use something like that. They're pretty, pretty successful feature. I tried to get us to put one here in City Hall back when we did the remodeling, but seemed to have fallen on deaf ears along the way. But would you be amenable to changing it to waterless?
I can.
Or you're just going by with the current ordinance, conservation ordinance for fixture flow rates? This is on page sixty.
Yeah, I see, yeah.
And we're talking specifically about buildings. I'll leave that up to you, whether you want to do it or not.
But it is, it is a working document, and it's going to be changed as things change, but, and I certainly have never seen a residence with urinals, but...
It's a quibble.
It's a quibble.
Whether you want to accept it or not, okay. The other one is...
We can have Andrea from Integral, Integral, take a look at.
Okay.
And put in there.
The only one I, other, I only have one more, and that's on page sixty-five, the last paragraph, paragraph. Paragraph, huh? All right. It says, "The Association of Bay Area Governments has deemed the Baylands as a priority development area."
And I'm sorry, what page was that on?
Uh, sixty-five.
Thank you.
And it's the last paragraph. And it says, "Efforts are being evaluated to make San Bruno Mountain a planned conservation area." And hasn't that been approved now?
Yeah, that's the next...
Yes.
Don't you have that in yours? And the application has been approved?
All right, let's go to page sixty, then. On page sixty, where it says urinals, and we're kind of going with what's in our ordinance right now.
Right.
But they actually have waterless urinals, and I think in a development like that, you'd probably want to use something like that. They're a pretty, pretty successful feature. I tried to get us to put one here in City Hall back when we did the remodeling, but it seemed to have fallen on deaf ears along the way. But would you be amenable to changing it to waterless?
I can.
Or you're just going by with the current ordinance, conservation ordinance, for fixture flow rates? This is on page sixty.
Yeah, I see, yeah.
And we're talking specifically about buildings. I'll leave that up to you, whether you want to do it or not.
But it is, it is a working document, and it's going to be changed as things change, but, and I certainly have never seen a residence with urinals, but...
It's a quibble.
It's a quibble.
Whether you want to accept it or not, okay. The other one is...
We can have Andrea from Integral, integral, take a look at.
Okay.
And put in there.
The only one I, other, I only have one more, and that's on page sixty-five, the last paragraph, paragraph.
Paragraph, huh? All right. It says, "The Association of Bay Area Governments has deemed the Baylands as a priority development area."
And I'm sorry, what page was that on?
Uh, sixty-five.
Thank you.
And it's the last paragraph. And it says, "Efforts are being evaluated to make San Bruno Mountain a planned conservation area." And hasn't that been approved now?
Yeah, that's the next, don't you have that in yours? And the application has been approved, the next part of the sentence?
Yeah, but isn't it now an approved conservation area?
Yes, it is correct.
Okay.
It is a P C U.
Okay, so I'm just...
So we should update that wording, is what you're saying, to say that it is part of a P C U.
Instead of "are being," has been evaluated, and the next part of the sentence, and the application has been approved, so...
So, yeah.
Just make that sentence better.
Yeah.
I mean, that was, when we went over it, we actually pointed that out, and the sentence just didn't quite get changed.
Yeah, it didn't come through, okay.
Fully.
And if I could just tag onto that comment, because it relates to the same text, I had also noted the same thing, and I had asked staff, you know, why does it say opportunities may exist to identify portion of the Baylands? Because I had thought we had included portions of the Baylands, and according to staff, it was parts of the Baylands. So I think this could read a little more accurately, because parts of the Baylands have already been included.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
And Andrea, I just didn't quite catch all of that. We did bring that up at the last subcommittee meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, but didn't quite make it into the language, so you're quite right to notice.
And so you probably had that same change yourself, then, huh? Okay, that's all, that's all I have on that. And again, I want to commend you on the hard work and commitment that you and all the other committees and commissions put on this, so it's quite a, quite a body of work, so...
And Laura, did you have any comments that you wanted to make?
I, well, so I had looked through the document, and I had asked for like a redlined version so we could see what changes had been made, but it was hard for staff to locate an exact redline, so I just was curious, from the subcommittee, what are the changes from the last time we looked at the document?
They're pretty minor.
Okay.
Basically, what we did, we had comments, as you recall, from all the different committees and commissions, and we went through all of those comments and talked with our consultant and asked her to incorporate those as best we could. And then we tried to do updates, and obviously, this last one we just talked about, we didn't quite get it fully in there. So they're very minor, from, I think the last time we saw was probably June.
Mm-hmm.
And we essentially accepted all the proposals, you know, we certainly did a little massaging of the language, but essentially, from the substantive point of view, it was in agreement with virtually all the suggestions. They really were all very minor, because I think by this time, everyone's pretty comfortable with the major concepts and the framework.
Right, okay. And what is the plan for how often this document would be updated? Because it, you know, it's been stated that it's a living document, but we're approving this final version of it at this point in time, so I'm just curious, what is the next time, you know, if at all, that we would look at this?
Well, the, and I was going to say this as a part of my remarks, that basically, the purpose of this at this point is to bring it to the planning commission, because these are a set of principles of sustainability for the Baylands' development, but it also has indicators, is how, on all the different principles, such as, you know, that zero net energy use in buildings, and, you know, conserve water, and, you know, et cetera, et cetera, all those sustainability objectives. And then we have indicators, and then we have a set of things to implement. And of course, the number ten, I think, has to do with the health and safety parts of the Baylands, and how to deal with that. So there, as you know, there, this is for everybody else, there are indicators and there are implementation guidelines. Now, what that's for is for the planning commission.
Okay.
Because they will be very shortly, you know, deliberating, you know, what they're going to be recommending to the council, and we want to have as a part of the guidance for that process, this framework of sustainability. And so in this immediate near future, that's the role it'll play. But as we know, as the whole planning process for the Baylands unfolds, you know, things are going to change. And the implementation of what's appropriate and feasible and so forth will change, and that will get reflected in the document. And we don't have a statement in here about, you know, it has to be updated annually. No, it's more, that's why we call it a living document, because it's going to be done in conjunction with the planning and implementation of the planning on the Baylands, which, as we know, is going to be for decades.
Okay.
Yeah, and let me just, just add to what Ray said. So the document is, is really a tool, and it used to be called Plan, Sustainability Plan, and, and we changed the wording to have it be a framework, because, because it will be a tool for the planning process, and it will be helpful for the planning commission. But I think it, it's, I think it would be even more important for the council when, when the Baylands comes before us. And in this document, we use the One Planet approach with the ten principles. That is something that we hope that UPC adopts, and decides that One Planet is a good system to use in regards to applying sustainability to the project, but that isn't something that they have agreed to. That's part of our development agreement, that eventually, that we will work out with them. But I guess we should, you know, I guess we'll just continue with, you know, why I'm, well, first of all, I'm glad that you guys read this document, and that you like it. And what I felt was really impressive about this document is that all the other advisory committees and commissions have read this document, and chimed in, and, and so we have a document here that you will not find, I don't think, anywhere in the area, maybe not even in the country. I think it is an excellent example of what a true sustainable development can be, and because of the site being where it is, and all the transportation opportunities, and the innovation that exists in the Bay Area, these things can be implemented. And when you look at what's in here, everything that's in this document has been done before somewhere else in the world, so it isn't pie in the sky, sustainability aspirations and goals. These things are rooted in reality, but all these different pieces have never come together into one plan, as far as we're aware of. So it's very exciting to see something like that being able to be used as we plan for the future of this Baylands development, so, thank you.
Yeah, and the only other thing I would like to do, certainly in agreement with Cliff, is to just recognize some of the people that I could recall that were a part of this process for many, many years. And we had representatives from the various committees and commissions, and catch me if I forget the, any people, Cliff, but I remember that from Recreation Commission, we had Chris Hart and Renee Marmian, were the two key people who spent the most time there. From Planning, we had Dave Reinhardt, Planning Commission, and then from Open Space and Ecology, Glenn Fieldman. And then from the staff, the city manager was very much a part of it, and then at the beginning, it was Stuart, and then it became John Sawicki. And so we had a lot of participation in this, and they all were partly responsible for the product, and then we had a really excellent consultant, so put it all together, and I hope we're providing useful guidance for the planning commission, and ultimately for the council. So what we're doing now essentially is approving this as what the council anticipates in the Baylands' planning process, and instructing the planning commission accordingly.
I would also want to say that hopefully we are providing guidance to UPC also, to the potential developer.
Okay, so I would like to move approval.
All right, well, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all for your hard work, and for all the commissions, committees, staff who have worked so hard on this issue. Okay, that will bring us to new business, item A, introduce ordinance six oh two regarding the restriction and limitations on the use of tobacco products, e-cigarettes, medical marijuana in many places, including multi-unit dwellings. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. This matter has come back from the last council meeting. I'm going to do an overview of a little bit of background with the state law, explain what the state of current law is in Brisbane, and do an overview of the ordinances, the laws that the county has adopted, which do not apply in Brisbane, they only apply in the unincorporated areas of the county. I'd then like to talk a little bit about the differences between the proposed ordinance before you and the county's laws. The council had instructed the subcommittee to look at the county's ordinances, and the subcommittee has recommended to council adopting much of the same kinds of regulations, but there are some differences. So I, after explaining the county's ordinance, I'd like to explain where those differences I'd then like to answer a couple of questions that I think have arisen over the course of the day in terms of how the proposed ordinance would work, and what some of the specific requirements are. And then I'd like to hand it over to Ms. Shonda Scruggs from the county, who has prepared a presentation for you, and can explain a little bit about how the county's ordinance has worked, the experience with the county, and can explain a lot of the research and the questions that have come up about, that underlie what the county has done and what many other cities have done that lie within the county. So with that overview, I'm going to go ahead and highlight the, the current area of the law. State law, under state law, which applies in Brisbane as well as everywhere else within the state, smoking is smoking, but not e-cigarette use, which is also called vaporizing or vaping. Smoking is banned in enclosed and indoor workplaces. Smoking is also banned within twenty feet of main doors and windows of certain government buildings. Smoking is also banned at playgrounds and totlots, sandboxes, daycare facilities, including home daycares, and inside a car whenever a minor under the age of eighteen is inside. Under state law, sales of tobacco products to minors under the age of eighteen are banned. It also bans sale of tobacco products from vending machines. Currently, there's, the only regulation under state law that applies to e-cigarette use is the ban on sale of e-cigarettes to minors under the age of eighteen. There is pending legislation at the state level that would regulate e-cigarettes the same way that, that smoking of tobacco is regulated, but at the moment, there is no state law that addresses that issue. State law allows local governments to create additional restrictions on the use of any tobacco products or any other kinds of products. So state law sort of sets the, the floor, but local governments can add to those restrictions. Currently in Brisbane, the, the only law that we have that regulates any tobacco product whatsoever is our tobacco retailer's permit requirement. We require those who are selling tobacco products to get a permit from the city before they can do so. Currently, that, that is enforced by the county. The county adopted the same sort of regulation, and the city adopted regulations that mirror it, and the county enforces our tobacco retailer permit provisions. Right now, the city's permit requirements do not apply to those who want to sell e-cigarettes. The county has adopted a smoking ordinance and smoking restrictions, and under the county's ordinance, the county bans smoking and use of e-cigarettes, as well as vaporizing or smoking of a variety of different substances in several different kinds of places. And those places sort of fall into two different categories, and the county addresses them in their local code in two different places. And so the ordinance that, that we are proposing mirrors that, so it's addressed in two separate different sections, or would be addressed in two separate sections of the Brisbane municipal code. So under the county's ordinance, the county bans smoking or vaporizing of a variety of different substances in certain businesses and certain public places. And those places include enclosed structures that are owned or leased by the county, except for private residences. Private residences are addressed in another area, which I will get to in a moment. Within thirty feet of any of these enclosed structures owned or leased by the county, that thirty feet stops at the street level. Enclosed businesses patronized by the public, and enclosed passageways between such businesses. County-owned, operated, or maintained beach, parks, or trails. And the county allows businesses to apply for an exemption based on unusual circumstances to all of these restrictions that I just listed. The other part of the, the county's ban applies to multi-unit residences. And multi-unit residences are defined under the county's ordinance to include any, any residence that essentially is not a detached, single-family home. So it would include an apartment building, a condo building, a duplex, a triplex, a townhouse, any, any residential situation where you have either shared ceilings, shared floors, or shared walls. It does not apply, however, to a detached, single-family home that has an in-law unit or an in-law unit. So in a situation where you have a detached family home, but there is either an in-law unit within the home or behind the home, that would, that would be considered to be a single detached family home, and the restrictions do not apply. Under the county ordinance, the ban on smoking in multi-unit residences extends to all indoor or outdoor common areas unless it is an outdoor designated smoking area, as, as defined specifically under the ordinance. It also applies to individual units in a multi-unit resident, including balconies, porches, and patios that are exclusively to be used by that resident and their guests. The county ban on smoking in individual units maintains an exception, and that exception is for the smoking or vaping of medical marijuana. Again, that exception under the county's ordinance applies only in an individual unit. You can't smoke medical marijuana in common areas, and you can't smoke it in the businesses that are precluded in the other part of their smoking ban. The county also has some limited restrictions on the sales of tobacco products, including e-cigarettes. It bans the sale of these products in county-owned or leased buildings. It bans vending machine and self-service display sales. It bans out-of-package sales and distribution of free samples. And then the county also maintains a tobacco retailer permit requirement that is identical to what the city has on its books, except the county recently amended those requirements to extend them to retailers of e-cigarettes. Okay, so the, there are some substantive differences between what the county has on its books and what the ordinance and run of the council today, if adopted, what, what, how it would work. So I'd like to just highlight what those substantive differences are. Just like the county ordinance, our ordinance is divided into two sections. The first section is eight point four five. That's the section that mirrors the county's ban on smoking in places owned by the cities, structures owned by the cities, certain public places, and in certain businesses. The difference between what is proposed here in Brisbane and the county's ordinance, however, is that the proposed ordinance would apply only to certain specifically listed city-owned public parks, trails, and outdoor sports facilities, and their associated parking lots. In the proposed ordinance, there is a list, and the ban would apply only to those specifically listed. The ban applies at any city-operated or city-co-sponsored recreational program that's not on city property. that's not on city property. And I understand from staff that that would include any recreational program that is being provided on school district property. It would apply to public transit stops within the city. The city's proposed ordinance imposes the same penalties for violation that the county imposes for violating its smoking ban in multi-unit residences. The county seems to have two different penalty provisions that apply depending on whether the violation is to the ban on multi-unit residents, smoking in multi-unit residents, or the ban on smoking in sort of these more public places. The city's ordinance just applies the same violation across the books. And the city's ordinance does not include a provision that is contained in the county's ordinances that would establish that violation by a city employee is cause for city discipline. That the city attorney has removed because including that provision would need to be, we would first need to meet and confer with employee representatives before we could include that provision in the ordinance. There's one additional difference. It's a minor difference that is not included in the draft in front of you that I would like to propose. And this is page 13 of the draft in front of you. 8.45.040 subsection A. This is the provision that lists all of the different places that the ban on smoking applies that are not the multi-unit resident restrictions. At the end of the section that I just referenced, I would like to suggest that we add a provision there. This provision is the provision that says that smoking is banned in any enclosed structure owned or leased by the city, except for residences, and within 30 feet in any direction from such enclosed structure up to the edge of the city's property, except areas where there's less than 30 feet from the enclosed structure before you get to the street. In other words, there's a 30-foot bubble around any city-owned structure, any city-owned building, for example, City Hall. You can't smoke within City Hall. You can't smoke within 30 feet in any direction around City Hall. However, where that 30 feet would get you into the street, the ban stops. Smoking in the street is permitted. You can smoke in your car. What I'm suggesting is that we add to that 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 30-foot bubble where you can't smoke should end at the sidewalk that is adjacent to the street. And the reason that I suggest adding that and making that change is so that we are uniformly allowing smoking on all public sidewalks that are adjacent to the street, all throughout the city. Otherwise, we would have a situation where smoking on the sidewalk is allowed until you get within 30 feet of a city-owned building, and then suddenly it would not be allowed. I think that would be confusing to the public, difficult to enforce. And certainly, we don't want to be in a situation where someone were to step off the street so that they could smoke. We want pedestrians to stay on the street. So I am suggesting that we add to the end of that a provision that says something to the effect of, it now reads, "Except areas that are less than 30 feet from the enclosed structure that lie within a public roadway." And then also to make clear that the public sidewalk that is adjacent to the roadway is also an area where that ban on smoking would not apply. So I can address the exact wording when we bring it back. We would just need the council to be in agreement, if it decides to move forward today, in agreement with that concept. Okay, now I'm going to go back to the differences between the ordinance and the county ordinance. The other part of the county's ordinance, again, is the ban on smoking in multi-unit residences. The proposed ordinance in front of you mirrors exactly the county's ban on smoking in multi-unit residences with two exceptions. The first exception is unlike the county ordinance, the proposed ordinance in front of you contains no exemption that would allow smoking or vaporizing of medical marijuana in individual units in multi-unit residences. And as the staff report made clear, the committee recommended that that is how the ordinance proceed to the council. But the committee wanted to make sure that the council had two additional legislative options that are set forth in the staff report. One is to, one of those options is to take the approach that the county did, which is to include an exemption that would allow the smoking of medical marijuana, but only in individual units in multi-unit residence. The second option would be to ban the use of medical marijuana in all places, including the individual units of a multi-unit residence, except where the individual obtains a doctor's note saying that smoking or vaporizing is recommended for that particular individual because of enhanced medical effects of taking the marijuana through smoking or vaporizing rather than some other means. The only other difference between the proposed ordinance in front of you and the county's ordinance with respect to the multi-unit resident restriction on smoking is that the county ban regarding existing units in a multi-unit resident and existing commonplaces in a multi-unit resident took effect 14 months after the county's legislation took effect. Ordinarily, an ordinance takes effect 30 days after it's finally adopted on a second reading. And that was true of the county's ordinance. However, the provisions that apply the smoking ban to existing units in a multi-unit resident and existing commonplaces in a multi-unit residence didn't take effect for an additional 14 months. The ordinance in front of you does the exact same thing. However, it reduces that time from 14 months to 12 months. The other thing that the county has done in its ordinance is it has imposed, as I mentioned before, some narrow limitations on the sale and distribution of tobacco products, which apply to both tobacco, traditional tobacco products as well as e-cigarettes. The ordinance in front of you adopts the identical substantive restrictions. And then finally, the ordinance in front of you amends the city's tobacco retailer permit provisions to match the county's ordinance by extending those requirements to retailers of e-cigarettes. By doing that, the city would allow the county to continue to enforce its permit provisions. The county requires that, in order to enforce a city's tobacco retailer permit provisions, that the city have the identical requirements that the county maintains. So this would bring essentially our permitting requirements back into conformity with the county's. Two issues I would like to address before I hand everything over to the county representative. There has been a question raised about the signage requirements under the ordinance. The signage requirements differ depending on which part of the ordinance you're looking at. And as I mentioned before, the ordinance is divided, the smoking ban in the ordinance is divided into two chapters. Chapter 8.45 addresses, does not address or regulate residences. 8.45 addresses the businesses that I mentioned, the city-owned properties that I mentioned, and the outdoor spaces that I mentioned. Section 8.45.050 has some signage requirements that require the posting of signs in, on all buildings and inside the rooms where smoking is prohibited. Those do not apply to any residence. Those requirements apply, would apply to commercial businesses that the restrictions apply to, the businesses that are patronized by the public. It would also apply to the city in terms of city properties where smoking is banned, as well as to the outdoor places, the public places that the smoking ban applies. There is, there are two provisions in this ordinance that apply to multi-unit residents, signage to multi-unit residents. The first is 8.46.060. Under that requirement, under that provision, signage is required on only the exterior of a multi-unit resident building, saying no smoking, and at each unenclosed common area where smoking is not prohibited. There is no requirement that anyone, that there be any signage placed in an individual unit in a multi-unit resident, including any exclusive-use outdoor part. So the ordinance defines a unit to mean the unit inside itself, as well as any exclusive-use part that extends outside, whether that's a balcony or a fenced-in yard that really belongs to one tenant or one owner. The ordinance does require signage in any designated smoking areas in multi-unit residence should the landlord or the legal owner of that property decide to designate a smoking area. There also have been some questions raised about the obligations that are imposed on homeowner associations, property owners, and tenants under the multi-unit resident smoking ban. And I'm just going to highlight what is required of those individuals under the proposed ordinance, should the council adopt it. "Any person with legal control over an area in a multi-unit resident cannot knowingly permit ashtrays or receptacles designed for depositing smoking waste in any area of the multi-unit resident where smoking is prohibited, and the person with legal control must keep such areas free of any tobacco waste." "No one, including guests, may smoke or vaporize in any indoor or outdoor part of a multi-unit residence unless they are at a properly designated smoking area. And those with legal control over the multi-unit resident may not knowingly permit anyone to smoke or vape in an area that is not a properly designated smoking area." In other words, you can't give your guests permission to smoke in areas where smoking is prohibited. "Homeowner associations and property owners must comply with the signage requirements that I explained a few moments ago." And as I explained a few moments ago, homeowner associations and property owners may, but are not required, to designate a smoking area that is consistent with the requirements set forth in the ordinance. "Property owners must comply with requirements in the ordinance as to any new leases or new rental agreements. And there is a requirement that applies to everyone, including guests, not to intimidate or harass anyone who seeks compliance with the ordinance. And there it is a violation of the ordinance to cause, permit, aid, or abet the violation of the ordinance." Those are the requirements of the multi-unit resident provisions set forth in the proposed ordinance. With that, I would like to hand over to the county, who Ms. Scruggs has provided us with a tremendous amount of information and has a presentation for council and for the public.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow city council members. Again, I'm Shonda Scruggs from the San Mateo County Tobacco Prevention Program. My comments this evening are just to kind of provide some additional base-level knowledge for why your city is pursuing the efforts that it's doing tonight. This is the 50th anniversary, this year is the 50th anniversary of the first release of the Surgeon General's report on smoking. And this effort was spearheaded by a resident who was concerned about being exposed. So I wanted to just give, again, some base-level understanding of what is secondhand smoke. So secondhand smoke is a mixture of the mainstream smoke that comes, that is exhaled by the smoker, and the side stream smoke is the smoke that's coming off the end of the cigarette. The side stream smoke contains 85% of the contaminants that a person might absorb, either as the primary smoker or a person who is exposed to that. And it contains the same level of chemicals, or same type of chemicals, that the individual smoker will absorb or inhale. The concentrations are the most toxic and carcinogenic in this side stream smoke. So the EPA has categorized secondhand smoke as a carcinogen. And we know that there are more than 7,000 chemicals exhaled in the mainstream smoker, in the side stream smoke of a cigarette. And up to 70 of those are carcinogenic. Between the years of 2005 and 2009, we estimate there are more than 34,000 deaths caused by heart disease related to secondhand smoke exposure, and almost 8,000 related to lung disease. So there are a couple of groups of people who are most at risk when exposed to secondhand smoke, those with heart problems, breathing problems like asthma, and women especially, who are pregnant or with small children. The long-term health effects of secondhand smoke can lead to any number of cancers. Lung cancer is the third list of known cancers caused by tobacco and secondhand smoke exposure. Lung infections due to the inhalation of smaller particles into the lower levels of the lungs. Asthma, as well as exacerbation of asthma, especially in children. And we know that secondhand smoke compounds a lot of existing chronic conditions, which could lead to further heart disease and/or stroke. So the biggest group who is at one of the most vulnerable populations, would that be of children, as well as those with chronic conditions? So children who have been exposed to secondhand smoke have a greater risk of being, triggering their asthma or causing asthma in children. Sudden infant death syndrome. Children who have been exposed to someone in the household smoking are more likely to have died from SIDS than children that have not been exposed to secondhand smoke. We estimate that more than 200,000 to 1 million children have their conditions exacerbated by exposure to secondhand smoke. So what do, what do the scientific authorities say? Well, the World Health Organization says that there is no safe level of exposure to tobacco smoke, and the notion that such a threshold value for toxicity from secondhand smoke should be rejected. They also assert that voluntary policies have been shown to be ineffective and not adequate in protecting bystanders from exposure to secondhand smoke. The U.S. Surgeon General, again, beginning in 1964 and subsequent years, stipulate that separating smokers from non-smokers, cleaning the air, and ventilating buildings cannot eliminate exposures of non-smokers to secondhand smoke. So again, this information is about the person who does not smoke and their ability to be exposed to the toxins that may be in the air. So one of the areas that your city is looking at this evening is smoke-free multi-unit housing. So there is a prominent researcher, Neil Kleipas, from Stanford, who looked at some assessment of the movement of smoke throughout different types of buildings in California. He assessed some buildings here in San Mateo County, those in LA County, and San Francisco as well. His research is ongoing, but he has looked at various sizes of condos and apartment buildings, those that are in rent-controlled areas, those that are makeshift units above garages, and your traditional apartment buildings that may be two or three units, or those in high-rises. So we don't need to get into the very specific scientific information of this, but this will be a graphic representation of what happens when, when it has to do with airflow in a specific facility. So if you think about in the wintertime, if you open a door and the heat is on in the inside of a building, when you open the door, the air gets sucked in, and you kind of feel that pressure of the air coming in, and it goes up to the top. That's called the chimney effect, or the stack effect. So that warm air moves to the top and gets pushed out of the building. The arrow's there, and yellow represents perhaps open windows. The other effect that would drive airflow in a building have to do with the wind. So if people in middle units have their windows open, depending on the flow of the air, it could go in. Also, you have other windows that may open on the lower level of the building, as well as the heating and cooling system. So the graphic representation here is that there are many driving forces that can transmit the air throughout a building so that no one area of the building is immune from what's happening in other parts of the building. So kind of hotspots for movement of tobacco or other smoke, including other burning items, you know, burning food, incense, candles, and the like. They travel through these small cracks and crevices throughout a building. So electrical cracks, fixtures, baseboards, and vents. Because no building is completely sealed, it must allow for some form of airflow. And these areas tend to be the ones that allow for the greatest seepage of of tobacco smoke in a building. So Neil Kleipas also did some research in comparing living next to a smoker and being in a casino that allows for smoking. So again, if you just look at the very basic numbers, they looked at the mean average of exposure in a casino that allow for smoking to be arranged anywhere from forty to eighty micrograms per cubic meter. So all you need to know that that mean number of sixty-two is less than the six thousand that a person who was living next to exposure, a smoker was exposed to. So this was a real-time observation where they had their monitors set up in a person's unit who lived next door to a person who was smoking. So you see, depending on the time when the person was there at home, that would be when their greatest exposures were to smoke. But again, sixty-two micrometers, micrograms per cubic meter in a casino that allows smoking, whereas living next to a smoker, it was six thousand. So this isn't a effort that has been, that's not new in this county or even in the United States or even throughout California. So the list here on the left shows cities or jurisdictions throughout the county that restrict smoking in common areas of multi-unit residences, and this would be the lobby areas, the laundry rooms, or any recreation rooms that might exist. On the right, you see cities or jurisdictions that prohibit smoking in multi-unit residences in the individual units. Belmont there, the first one listed, was the first in the entire world to pass such a policy in two thousand seven, and that has started a trend throughout the world, excuse me, where even the Department of Housing and Urban Development has requested that all of their public housing units be transitioned to smoke-free. So one of the questions we often get around smoke-free multi-unit housing is, is this a big problem? Does it require a lot of effort from the police department, and how are those calls managed? So my office maintains a hotline where a person could call to express a complaint of being exposed to secondhand smoke, and again, that, that is the way that we got notified from tenants in this city about their exposure. So the second bullet, we'll talk about Foster City. So Foster City is the most recent one who passed an ordinance like this, and they saw no drastic increase in the number of calls prior to the policy and after the policy. Our San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition takes great pride in providing educational assistance to the jurisdictions, because we do not want this to be something that becomes cumbersome to the city or the police enforcement, police enforcement officers, nor do we want this to be a situation where people are chastised for being smokers. None of these policies are geared towards telling people they must quit smoking. These policies are, we ask that you modify your behavior to protect the air quality of those who choose not to smoke. So the next aspect of your ordinance that you're considering relates to electronic cigarettes. So electronic cigarettes are electronic smoking devices, commonly known as e-cigs, e-hukas, vape pens, electron nicotine delivery devices, or battery-operated devices designed to deliver nicotine, flavor, or other substances through an aerosol inhaled by the user, the user is commonly known as a vapor. Devices can be disposable or reusable, and that actually using the device is called vaping. Now, we know that earlier versions of these devices looked very similar to traditional cigarettes, they're called cigalights. But since the introduction in the United States since two thousand seven, these have been modified quite substantially. So there are still those on the market that look like traditional cigarettes, but if you scroll down the picture there, the one on the bottom, they're heavily modifiable. We know that there are at least four hundred brands of these devices on the market, and they range anywhere from ten dollars to several hundred dollars. When it comes to flavors for these devices, we know that there are at least seventy-five hundred unique flavors currently on the market and about two hundred and forty-two that occur on the market every month. So sometimes these devices contain nicotine, and I will assert that not always do they contain nicotine, but because there are no regulation of these devices, they're not required to disclose exactly what made up in the mix. So people sometimes ask, is nicotine really that bad? Well, yes. Researchers found that nicotine is even more addictive than heroin and cocaine. It raises the blood pressure and pulse and constricts blood vessels, and can cause harm to brain development in adolescents who are predisposed to future use of tobacco. So there's often the argument about water vapor versus aerosol, and again, there's no need to go into very distinct scientific discussions, but the reason why we use the term aerosol is because there are small particulate matters that are suspended in the air of the substance that comes off the device, and by scientific definition, that is an aerosol. Now, these devices are not required to disclose what is in them, but when the FDA required, did some testing on devices, they bought just on the open market, we found at least ten chemicals in these devices that are on California's Prop sixty-five list of known carcinogens and reproductive harm toxins. So the secondhand aerosol. So again, we're thinking about not the primary user in this instance, but a person who may be nearby, a person who is using one of these devices. And researchers have found that a person who is standing next to a person using this device could reasonably absorb nicotine at the same levels as they do a person who is using a traditional cigarette. Again, the small particulates that have been found in the aerosol of these devices, because of their size, can travel very deep into the lungs and may cause tissue inflammation. One of the biggest concerns that we have at the Health Department and those of us in our Tobacco Education Coalition is the rise in the use, use, youth use of these devices. So what they found in the Monitoring of the Future report is that there has been a rapid increase in the number of minors who use these devices, even surpassing that of traditional cigarettes. We know that the state law prohibits the sale of these devices to a minor, but again, minors have a way of getting a hold of these devices. So when we look at California relative to that national survey, California youth mirror that information that has happened on a national level. But what we're finding is that California youth might be using at a much higher, a slightly higher level than that of the national numbers. Now, the California Healthy Kids Survey is not representative of all students in California because a school district must opt to take the assessment. But when these numbers mirror those of, on a national level, and those in other states that have a similar questionnaire issue to students, we believe that these numbers are sufficient to represent a large number of student behaviors throughout the state. Electronic cigarette marketing, marketing. So one of the key differences here is that traditional tobacco products are, have been prohibited from television and radio since nineteen seventy-one, when President Nixon at the time banned those devices, or excuse me, those products from being marketed on television and radio. And subsequent laws prohibit the use of cartoons or things that are used to entice youth to use tobacco products, as well as outdoor billboards, product placement, branded merchandise and free samples. None of these traditional restrictions apply to electronic devices. So this graphic here just shows some of the advertisements that a youth may have been exposed to when flipping through magazines, on social media, and in some cases even on TV. We know that these types of advertisements would not, are not allowed with traditional tobacco products, but as it currently stands, electronic devices are not prohibited from this type of marketing. So as your city attorney mentioned earlier, the FDA does not regulate where these devices can be used, but local governments do have the ability to place restrictions on these devices. There is a deeming regulation out by the FDA that says they are considering regulating these devices, and this, they've gone through a very extensive public comment period where they have yet, have not yet made their final decision as to whether they will treat these devices like traditional cigarettes or something else. Again, these are not efforts that are unique to Brisbane or even to San Mateo County. There are more than a hundred jurisdictions in the state that have put together some form of restrictions to regulate electronic devices. Most often is to treat them in a similar manner as they treat traditional tobacco products. So here in San Mateo County, Daly City, Foster City, San Mateo, the city of San Mateo, and the unincorporated areas of the county treat electronic devices in the same way that they treat traditional tobacco products. South San Francisco has very location-specific restrictions on these devices and in their downtown core. So that is my presentation for this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
One thing, there's been some question about whether or not the emissions from e-cigarettes travel through multi-unit residences in the same way that tobacco smoke does.
So I am not a researcher, but of the research that we have read and come across and been shared with us is that the movement is different, but it's not that it doesn't happen. It does happen in a different way because of the size of the particles that are moving. But what you do find is that because there are suspended particles in the aerosol from electronic device, they do stick to surfaces. So in a home of a traditional smoker, you know, sometimes the walls are yellowed if they had been painted white, but most people don't notice that until they remove something off the wall. So very similar kind of surface-level attachment can occur, but we will assert that the movement is different.
So is it different enough to say neighbors aren't really harmed?
So again, I, I'm not a researcher, but we have not seen research that would support that it is of zero harm to a person living next door.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Ms. Scruggs, for all the information you've provided. And I just wanted to, to reiterate that, and staff can confirm that the revised version of the ordinance, as I understand it, does include some more citations to research and that was provided through the county, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. At the last council meeting, the, the council directed that the committee take a look at the ordinance again on a few areas, and in the course of those committee meetings, the committee recommended adding some additional findings. Those additional findings have been included. You have a redlined copy of the ordinance in front of you. The, any substantive changes are redlined, and so toward the end of the findings section, you will see that there are some additional findings that have been added.
Okay, thank you. And we, and I did receive one question from the public earlier today about the health effects of vaping of medical marijuana, and I was wondering if you or Ms. Scruggs could comment on what research can be relied upon that.
So to your question about the effects of secondhand medical marijuana vapor, just marijuana exposure to marijuana aerosol, I put a call out for some additional research on that. So I didn't, I don't have an answer at this point in time, but I did request of my colleagues and some of the researchers we work with at UCSF if they had that data to send it in.
Okay, and was there any data, I think I may have seen something on the second, the effects of secondhand marijuana smoke, and is that the same issues with, with traditional cigarettes or?
So when we think about exposure to secondhand smoke, it is the exposure of the person who chooses not to engage in that behavior. So while there will be less carcinogens and contaminants in the secondhand marijuana smoke, a bystander would still be in a position to inhale or absorb that. But because marijuana is a controlled substance on the federal registry, there's far less research that has been done on the impacts of exposure, and when they do it, it is in a far more controlled environment. But they will, they have found that a bystander still has a negative impact on their health when being around or next to a person using marijuana.
Thank you.
Yes.
Could I follow up on that?
Yeah, and don't leave.
Sure.
Yeah, don't go away unless you want the exercise.
Sure.
I did, you know, try to read through all this stuff today, which is quite considerable, but I tried to keep up with it all, and one reference was actually, I guess, from one of your colleagues in another county. And there was a study from the University of Michigan School of Public Health, which I think you're referencing, on medical marijuana. It's called prohibiting the use of medical, or use of medical marijuana in multi-unit residential settings. And there's a quote here that, that marijuana smoke contains higher levels of several toxic compounds than tobacco smoke, including ammonia, hydrogen cyanide, nitrogen oxide, and certain aromatic amines, and, and it can cause respiratory symptoms such as cough, phlegm, and wheeze. And then they also point out that the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment of the California EPA in June two thousand nine, it put marijuana smoke under the Prop sixty-five as a proven carcinogen containing thirty-three of the same harmful chemicals found in tobacco smoke. Now, what I was not able to find, and this is where the evidence is unclear in my mind, it seems as if smoke from medical marijuana is not that great for secondhand people as well as the people who are using it. But of course, we're mostly concerned about the people, the secondhand people who are affected by it. But the difference between smoking and vaping is not entirely clear to me in terms of the relative harm and the emissions and so forth. And, and I noticed that some of the people, particularly the people who were in the marijuana active area, do make a real important distinction between those two. And we did get a letter from the head of the California Organization for the Reform of Marijuana Laws, who actually made that distinction and asked for us, okay, if you prohibit smoking, he actually said in the letter, but, but please don't prohibit vaping of medical marijuana. So what I don't know is, is how different they are, but evidently they believe there is a difference in the, in the health impact for both the smoker and, or the vapor and, and the people who would be affected by the, the secondhand vaping emissions.
So our, our primary concern from a public health standpoint is the bystander who chooses not to engage in that behavior. So a person who uses marijuana or tobacco, that is a choice that they have made, we are concerned about the individuals who have not made that choice when they cannot escape that environment. So when it comes to burning of a traditional cigarette and as composed, as compared to an electronic device, there is a mechanism difference. So you light a traditional cigarette, you burn tobacco leaf, and there have been chemicals added to increase the deeper inhale for smokers to make it easier for them to go down. All tobacco products have menthol in them, but methylated cigarettes have a much higher rate in them, and it's that cooling sensation to take it down a lot easier. So extensive research has shown that seven thousand chemicals will come off in that secondhand tobacco smoke. When it comes to electronic devices, you know, it's a mechanical device that heats a liquid substance that then becomes aerosolized that the person then inhales and sometimes exhales. So sometimes you'll see someone walking across the street and you'll see the plume around them. So it's, it's more visibly recognizable than a person smoking a traditional cigarette, but because of the mechanism as of being heated as opposed to being burned, there is a difference in what comes off, and researchers will assert that the level of contaminants in the air in the aerosol around it is less than that of a traditional cigarette smoke, but less than is not equivalent to safe.
Ms. Scruggs?
Yes.
Didn't you say before that your office is not involved in the medical marijuana or the marijuana prevention, that you're?
Correct.
You're involved with the tobacco?
Correct.
Portion of it?
Correct. So marijuana and the issuance of medical marijuana licenses is not handled by the Health Department at all. That's handled at the state level and which doctors they license to issue those cards, yes?
Thank you.
Yeah, if I, may I, Madam Mayor? So staying on medical marijuana?
Yes.
So in your ordinance, county's ordinance, you're not prohibiting the smoking of marijuana that's for medical purposes?
That is correct.
All right, and so I'm, I'm curious to know why that your ordinance, you know, allows that, and because that, that isn't what's being recommended by our, our subcommittee?
That was a legal decision by our county council.
Okay. So it has nothing to do with that person might smoke a pack of cigarettes a day or two packs a day, probably wouldn't smoke a pack of joints a day?
You know, I, I can't speak to the rationale behind our attorneys and why they made that distinction, but throughout the, the state, there are some jurisdiction that provide an exception and some that don't. So there isn't a uniformity across the state when it comes to that. Some jurisdictions include it all and some make an exception.
Okay, so, okay, so you're, the reason for the county is, is a legal one?
I, yes, yes. So our legal counsel made that determination, yes.
Okay. And then, you know, you talked about the difference between, you know, the vaporizing and, and the burning of traditional cigarettes and, you know, just learning about these e-cigarettes. I mean, I didn't know that much about them until this was before us. I always considered the e-cigarettes to be I always considered the e-cigarettes to be a device that at first was used by folks who wanted to quit smoking and that it was less harmful to them and the people around them. That the vapors that would come off were steam and that steam is not harmful. But I guess it's the other chemicals that are added to the e-cigarettes that make it potentially dangerous or?
So there are particulates that come off in the aerosol that are more than just water.
And, but I guess the data is not out there that shows the percentage of what is water and what is other?
You know, I, I'm not sure if there is research that breaks down the percentage of each of the components. There very well may be. I'm just not aware of it at this point in time.
Okay. All right. And then, so Belmont was the first city to implement the smoking ban ordinance?
Yes.
And so it's been around for eight years?
Yes.
So what's been the track record of complaints and how's the city?
When we speak to the code enforcement officer in Belmont, we have been told that there have been one to two calls on average per month since the passage of the ordinance. And in each instance, they send the code enforcement officer out to provide education. In the absence of the code enforcement officer, they send a police officer. But they've only issued one citation in that entire period of time.
Only one citation? Okay.
Yes.
And then, you know, we've received a lot of information from our constituents and some are for and some are against.
Yes.
And so I did a little research on my own in regards to, you know, is there a possibility someone could smoke in their unit and not bother someone next door to them? And so I looked up these smoke eaters. And so I'm sure that you've done a little research on that, but I didn't see it in your presentation. So how effective are they in containing the smoke?
So I will go back to statements made by the U.S. Surgeon General and the World Health Organization. So the World Health Organization, excuse me, the U.S. Surgeon General asserts that separating smokers from non-smokers, cleaning the air, and ventilating buildings cannot eliminate exposure of non-smokers to secondhand smoke.
Yes. Well, I mean, there's lots of things that we're all exposed to
This is true.
everyday life.
This is true.
And so it's the amount that determines the health risk.
You know, I would agree with that. I think that there are instances where a person has the ability to opt out of that situation and times when they don't have the ability to opt out of a situation. So when, early on, when restaurants used to be smoking section or airplanes were smoking section, a person would say, oh, I want to sit in the non-smoking section, or they could just leave that establishment. But when a person is in their multi-unit dwelling, they don't have the option to go somewhere else if they're exposed. So that is kind of the key distinction here, that we are seeking to protect the people who have chosen not to take on that behavior. And it's less, less about trying to change the person who is using, whether it be tobacco, marijuana, or electronic device, because our concern is for the greater public who chooses not to.
Okay. And, you know, a lot of these questions that I'm asking are, you know, we'll come back to our council in regards to the city. But, you know, in our ordinance, it talks about signage. And so that signs are going to be required at all of these multi-unit buildings, including duplexes. So if someone's got a house and the R1, it's a duplex, and they're required to have a sign on their house that says you can't smoke here. Is that something that the county has enforced in the unincorporated areas?
So what we have done, the county's policy doesn't go into full effect until the beginning of next year. So that's when the enforcement phase would begin. But anytime a property owner or landlord requests signage because they either cannot locate or cannot afford signage, the county will provide that.
Okay. But they would have to, they'd have to put the signage on their building. If they didn't do it, they would be in violation of the ordinance?
Correct. I'm not sure how your police department would look at that if that would be something they would be going out and seeking. Again, this is to help to modify community behavior and change social norms. It's not about penalizing people to a heavy degree for a behavior that, you know, they are addicted to.
And in the commercial buildings, that's in every room?
No, no. No, per your ordinance, it would be at the entrance. So most of your buildings already have some form of signage because state law requires that any facility that is owned or operated by either local jurisdiction, state or federal jurisdiction, that you not be allowed to smoke within 20 feet of that building. This one just extends it a little bit further. So your buildings already likely have signage on them. It may say 20 feet, but there would be some form of signage.
Okay. All right. I thought that was in the commercial part, but I'm sure I can find it later.
Sure.
And then, let's see. So you, in the county, they exclude sidewalks?
Yes.
But other areas where people gather outside?
Yes.
Trails?
Yes.
Okay.
So that varies jurisdiction to jurisdiction. Some jurisdictions include sidewalks, as in Foster City, but others do not. It becomes a policy call of the city council whether or not they include that or not.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Other questions? Thank you.
So would we like to open this, any other questions for staff before we move on? I do have one question for clarification. In the city ordinance, you said that mother-in-laws would not be included? And is that the case if they are within, they share walls and ceilings?
Okay, I'm going to refer you to page 19 of the proposed ordinance. The definition of multi-unit residence excludes detached, single-family residence. It also excludes detached, single-family home with a detached or attached in-law or second unit. So even if it's within the same structure.
So how would you say that's not a duplex?
Well, I would agree with you that it falls within the definition of multi-unit resident, but it's being carved out as an exception.
Okay. I'm not quite sure how that is being delineated, where it's?
So there is an exception. So the definition of multi-family dwelling, and I'm going to just go ahead and read it, means a residential property containing two or more units with one or more shared or budding walls, floors, ceilings, or shared ventilation systems, including but not limited to, and then it lists lots of different types of properties, common interest development, condominium, townhouse, duplex, triplex, apartment, or other rental complex. And then it has some exclusions that would otherwise potentially fall within that definition. The first is it does not include a property owned by the state or federal government, even if it's otherwise, would otherwise be a triplex or a duplex. It doesn't include a hotel or motel that meets the requirements of this particular provision under the Civil Code. It does not include a residential care facility or assisted living facility governed by state or federal community care license regulations. It does not include a detached, single-family residence. And it doesn't include a detached, single-family home with a detached or attached in-law or second unit when permitted pursuant to government code sections. And I won't, I will spare you the government code sections. So yes, you're right, it falls within the definition, but it's being pulled out as an exclusion.
And under that same item two, why would a residential care facility be excluded?
There is a, well, this, this came from the county's ordinance. As I mentioned before, we copied the county's ordinance, and this was one of the provisions there. I think that probably, I suspect, the reason this was included, and I would want to look at this if you decide not to include it, is to what extent could the city impose a smoking ban on a property that's being regulated by federal or state law? So there may be a preemption issue there. I'm not sure that there is. But this came from the county, and this is certainly just dodging that, that issue.
And so the item four, the detached, single-family home that has an in-law, let's say, in the basement, that, that also came from the county?
Yes. There were no changes made to this provision.
Okay. Thank you.
I have another question, Madam Mayor. So on page 14, you know, getting back to that signage. So session 8.45.050, so I just want to be clear on it. So it's about the no smoking signs or the no smoking symbol shall be conspicuously posted in every room, building, or other place where smoking is regulated by this chapter. So that, that does mean that if you have to put the sign in every room of a, of a public or a private building that has patrons going into that building?
Okay. So I'm just going to back up to be clear. I think, I think this provision, to be clear, does not apply to residential properties.
No, no, we're talking about commercial?
Right. So just to be clear to the public and everyone, that this, this provision would apply to the city in terms of city-owned properties, to the park areas that we've talked about. But this would apply to businesses that are patronized by the public. And what the requirement says, and again, this came directly from the county, that the signs shall be conspicuously posted in every room, building, in every room, building, or other place where smoking is regulated. My construction of that is if you posted it when you walked into the entrance, you're covered.
You're covered. Okay.
I think if the, when they're saying room is if you have a situation that only a particular room, the ban is only applying to a particular room because maybe that's the only area that's patronized by the public, then you would put it in, in that particular room. But for most businesses, you're really just going to have to post a sign by the entrance.
Okay. Just getting clarified.
If that isn't clear, we can, you know, we can clarify that in a way. But my construction of that is a business that posted at the front door is covered.
Sorry, I do have one additional question as well. So with respect to e-cigarettes, and this may be for Ms. Scruggs, we've had, we've received so far some public comments recommending that with, with respect to multi-unit housing, that e-cigarettes not be included. Can you talk about whether any other cities in the county that you're aware of have made that distinction? Or whether they've included e-cigarettes and regulated them like other tobacco products?
Yes. So for the cities that have multi-unit housing policies, let me go back to my slide here, which would be Daly City, Foster City, the unincorporated areas of the county, Belmont. So in the unincorporated areas of the county, Foster City and Daly City, their definition of tobacco product, which is smoking of tobacco products that are prohibited in multi-unit residences, includes electronic devices because they are built into the definition of tobacco products. Belmont has, because their policy was passed in 2007, which was the same year these devices were introduced in the United States, it doesn't apply in that case. But for the other cities that have smoke-free, multi-unit housing policies, electronic devices are included because they're included in the definition of tobacco products.
Okay. So Belmont didn't regulate e-cigarettes at that time when they passed?
Correct, in 2007. Right, when their language came out. So the devices first became popularized in the United States in 2007.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
So are we ready to open it up to public hearing?
I don't think this is a public hearing, but I think we want to hear from the public.
Well, we have a lot of requests and a lot of emails that have been received. And I know that some of the, a couple of people who are here tonight said they've sent emails that came in later. But I don't know if?
Well, yeah, I want to hear from the public, but it's not a public hearing.
Okay.
It's new business.
Okay. So with that, I have some slips and I have some emails. And I will start with the slips that I have. And then I have one from Olga Radom.
Good evening. My name is Olga Radom. I am resident of Foster City and a member of San Mateo Tobacco Education Coalition. And let's talk about tobacco again. I'm here because I have been seeing how tobacco smoke hurts people in their apartments and condos. It is a terrible thing, especially for low-income people. You would be amazed if you saw how people live. The smoke coming into their unit every day and making them sick. For many people, it makes their head ache, eye burns, their throat itch. They will sleep in the living room instead of their bedrooms. Many low-income families have children with asthma. They live in fear because they know their neighbor smoking could mean another visit to emergency room tonight. And for all those people, they are now more likely to get cancer or cardiovascular disease all because their neighbor is smoking inside. Because people are allowed to smoke indoors, innocent residents are exposed to terrible toxin on daily basis. They became just trapped in their homes. The smoker has a choice to smoke outside or not to smoke at all. But these people that I'm talking about don't have a choice. You might wonder, why don't they just move? But they have jobs, community, schools for their children. Why should they have leave home? And anyway, for poor people in the Bay Area, it is an expensive place to live. Many people just cannot afford to move. So I'm thanking you for considering this important law. Going smoke-free is the only way to protect the resident of San Mateo County who live in multi-unit buildings. Please consider this important law. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a slip from Tanya Dubrowski.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Dubrowski, and I'm project coordinator for Sunset Project. And I'm also a member of San Mateo Tobacco Educational Coalition. In my work for Sunset Project, I received many phone calls from tenants and landlords who are having a problem with drifting tobacco smoke. Many times, it is only one or two smokers who cause the entire complex to become an unsafe place to live. We know from years of experience nationwide that the only way to solve this problem is for multi-unit houses to go smoke-free. Sometimes people argue what we should just wait and let the individual landlord or condo HOAs figure it out for themselves. But I know from experience that most landlords and HOAs won't take any step. For HOAs, it's just too complicated and expensive. It is usually impossible to get enough members to what? It can cost money to hire a lawyer to amend the CCNR. In apartment, management usually refuses to take actions. Sometime it is because management just hands too often, change hands too often. Sometime it's because management just doesn't care. Sometime it's because the apartment is owned by big state-wise company that does not pay much attention to individual buildings. Sometimes landlords tell me that they would prefer to have their building be smoke-free, but they are waiting for a law. Meanwhile, this is an urgent issue for many residents. They cannot wait for any longer to have to decide whether to stay or move. It is tragic situation, especially since it will be easier solved if the smoker just smoke outside. I see this happen over and over again, and this is why I do not believe we can wait for landlord or HOAs to solve the drifting smoke problems themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I have a slip from Louise Bussi.
I guess I'm the other side of the coin. I just had to come and give my opposition. I just had to come and give my opposition to the non-smoking ordinance. I think that any law that changes the lifestyles of so many individuals should be put to the vote of the whole population, not decided by the city council. I am a non-smoker, I have not smoked for twenty-five years. I detest the odor of cigarettes and, cigarettes and e-cigarettes, but I'm totally against the passing of this law, it just doesn't seem fair. Please reconsider, our small town doesn't need this law. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a slip from Karen Cunningham.
Madam Mayor, City Council, I am an avid non-smoker, have been my entire life. I attended your meetings, I've listened to all of the information, and the one thing I would like to add to, to what you've been contemplating is, I choose not to smoke. People who choose to smoke, that's their choice, and they should be able to smoke within their own homes. What I had thought before I went to the subcommittee meeting was, you know, we should just ban smoking in every public place, and then, and then I heard the information, and I did read the reports, I read all of the reports, and I would urge people who are just saying, you know, people should make up their own mind, they need to read these, these scientific reports on, on smoking and think about it. So I tried to weigh everything I'd seen from all of you and all of the comments that I'd seen, you know, from my, my resident, my fellow residents and, and neighbors, et cetera, and the, the one thing I would ask you to consider is, you know, maybe the people who own the multi-units in Brisbane is that they make a decision, they either have a smoking unit or non-smoking units. So if I own a set of units in Brisbane, I can designate that they're going to be, I'm going to rent them to smokers or I'm going to rent them to non-smokers, and people have a choice. What, what I found at the subcommittee meeting, and I was, I was there for the entire meeting and, and felt that everybody did an amazing job, was that we kind of did go over the line a little bit relative to, you know, forcing people into one situation or another. And as an avid non-smoker, I would rather that nobody smoked, because I think it's a disgusting, horrible habit, and I would rather there was no smoke in Brisbane, but people do have a choice, and I don't think we can really force our choices, whether we like it or not, on everybody. So if I own a multi-unit building, I, I feel that I should be able to say whether I want it to be designated as smoking or non-smoking. I think that may be helpful in, in making this choice, and if, you know, people own a building and, and choose to have smokers there, it gives people who smoke a place to go live, and if I choose to own a building and I don't want smokers there, I have that choice as well, because I, I think what we do do, and as much as I hate smoking, is that if we make non-smoking in every residential building in, in Brisbane, in our apartment complexes, we are going to put some pretty harsh regulations on some of our lower-income people, and that might not sound great to a lot of people, but I, I do feel that to be true, so I'd like you to take that under consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. And then Dave Grumow.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. I've been, been thinking about this quite a bit since, since, well, before I got here tonight. Initially, learning about this, I just felt like it was a, very much of a, of a, kind of a government overreach type situation. After hearing the, the presentations, I understand a lot, a lot better about the reasoning and the rationale, and I do, I do see it. I, I'm in construction and I understand in, well, let me take a step back, the part that bothered me most of all was, was the fact that, that involves people's own homes and the individuals in their own homes, and, and to say a person can't smoke in their home that they're paying for and they're renting, it rankled me, I don't smoke, I, I don't have a soft spot for, for smoking, but it's, it's the part of me that feels like you need to support what's right, even if it's not, say, your own religion or that sort of thing. Anyways, I guess I, I'm, I'm still holding to that, and being in construction, I understand about poorly-built buildings and that sort of thing and smoke transmission, and that the, I do see that the people don't necessarily have the choice, and that's the part I'm, I'm struggling with a little bit, but I guess I still have to say that I, I, I believe that, that smokers do have to have a choice, or do have to be able to, to partake in their own home. That's where I'll leave it. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is the last of the slips that I have. I do have several written comments, and, so I will invite...
My name is Dr. Severwan.
Please speak into, speak into the microphone so the people at home...
I understand that some of the people are objecting to smoking, no-smoking in multi-units. I've done research on tobacco smoke. Nineteen seventy-six, I banned tobacco smoking at the University of Kentucky, seventy-six, and that state was all tobacco state. Wrong is wrong, you cannot give your air to other people to smoke. They can, anybody can smoke in a place where there's isolated airspace, but airspace is common. Once you intercept that space and you give smoke to people who do not want the smoke, that is also going against the rights of the people who do not want smoke. So I think it is very important to make sure that if the facilities have common, same air conditioning systems, they will go everywhere. The smoke sticks to all the walls, it is always molecules in the air. So based on all the research I've done for about forty years, I think it is best, the people who want to smoke, they can do, smoke in their own home without sharing that air with other people. Once you share the air, you are giving smoke to other people, whether they're children, grown-ups, everybody. It is well-known everywhere in the world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny Ames, six ninety, Sierra Point Road. In nineteen eighty-three, when I moved to Brisbane, it was an in-law apartment at San Francisco and Nino, had I known the owner smoked, I wouldn't have moved in. So I moved in and I'm getting, my eyes are burning and they're stinging, and I had to tape off the registers, and so I put an electric heater, well, the utilities were included until I plugged in the electric heater. Then they wanted me to pick up half the utility cost. So, you know, I, I'd like at least people to declare, you know, if there's a situation, people should know in these events, but the point I want to make is, I think this, when you burn a cigarette and there's a common airspace, I mean, it's really clear, you're violating someone else's airspace, especially if it's not declared. I like the idea of Karen Cunningham where you have a smoke-friendly declared situation, I think that should be fine. And regarding e-cigarettes, my eyes don't burn, they don't seem to bug me like regular cigarettes. I really think banning e-cigarettes is overreach in a big way, and I think people who have a nicotine fix, I'd rather have them do an e-cigarette than, than a regular cigarette if I'm going to be around them in public. And I don't have a problem with e-cigarettes in public spaces. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. You can see me struggling with the piles here. So I have a slip from Dan Carter.
Good evening, thank you guys for your service as always. Actually, the lady from the county, very impressive, wow. Thank you for that information, and from council, thank you very much for all that, because I think it really made everybody that was here at least understood everything that this was going to cover. So the one thing that I would ask is that you strongly consider taking the marijuana, medical marijuana, medical vaporization off of that list. For people that are in this situation, and I'm talking about cancer patients and, and patients that really need this to control something like that, they're already in a tough situation, going through one of the most horrible things, and I think we all know people have suffered through cancer and stuff, and if it is the only thing that helps their appetite or that, I'd be concerned about making them go outside to do something like that. So the smoking part of it, I understand, people, especially in apartment buildings, that can only afford that apartment building, and we know right now we have a, a kind of a crisis going on with prices of renting around the Bay Area, it's just ridiculous. So I think this would even make that harder. So I mean, I mean, it'd get harder for the people to be, have to live there with other smokers and be susceptible or, or put in a situation where they're breathing other people's smoke. I think it's, I don't think it's a cool thing, but that's just my opinion, but for the medical marijuana part, I just really see it as a health issue, and when we start messing with something that's going to comfort someone in their time of need or help their life have a better quality, I, I just don't think it's something we should be regulating as, as a city and as a compassionate people. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lou?
I think you've heard me speak about this subject before. I thank you so much for everyone's comments, and I learned a lot today too about, from our public health aspect as well. I just want to make a couple points. One is, I think what I'm hearing today is really about rights of smokers versus rights of non-smokers. Smokers do have a choice to smoke, it is highly addictive, I, I, I agree with that because we deal with that every day in the medical profession, but smoking, just because it's addictive, doesn't mean it's good for your health, it's, there's no, nothing good about smoking for your health. And the smoker does, even though it's difficult, have a choice to smoke. The non-smoker doesn't have a choice to be exposed in that building, so I do think we have to err on the side of protecting the non-smokers in this situation because they don't have the choice, the smokers do have a choice. And so I think if we're protecting rights, I think we need to, we do need to protect the rights and health of our non-smokers. So that's, that's where I fall on it, based on the, on the health argument. I think there's been a lot of conversation about medical marijuana, and I think my position has changed a little bit on that in the sense that I understand people's concerns about thinking about medical marijuana separate. I will reiterate that I still believe that you can use medical marijuana without smoking it, and that's what I recommend to my patients. I understand maybe that some people don't feel that that's true, there's very limited data that we can get on medical marijuana because, again, this is not something that's federally allowed, so it's hard to do research on. So I think that may be a separate issue than what we're dealing with, with tobacco, but absolutely on the tobacco side, I very, very strongly feel that we should protect our non-smokers, especially their health. Regarding e-cigarettes, again, I will say that our, our medical institution, Kaiser, believes that e-cigarettes should be treated the same way as regular cigarettes, so we do not allow in our medical buildings any e-cigarette use. So again, using that as another example of what the medical community feels is, is right for e-cigarettes, that's where we fall currently, based on the data. So very strongly I feel about tobacco, that we should protect the non-smokers, but e-cigarettes, we, that we should, until further data, or until we know that it's absolutely safe, we should treat them like cigarettes, and then for me, medical marijuana, I think if people really feel like they have to smoke it, maybe we should provide that, that right for patients, although again, I do think you can absolutely, and I do, I, I write that letter all the time for my patients, but I do think you can, you can use medical marijuana without smoking it. Okay, thank you.
Could I ask a question? I, I brought up earlier the, also a doctor from the Marijuana Reform Association of California, and they argued that maybe smoking is not such a best way to get medical marijuana, but they really want us to exempt vaping. What's your, you have a position on that, or does the medical community have a distinction between the two in terms of the impact on the secondhand?
Right, I, I think there's, again, the data are very limited on that. What I would say is that there is a lot of, there, there is a specific way you can use medical marijuana that's, can be very highly effective, and that is actually, there, there are actually, my patients have brought in these, these droplet bottles where you can, you can, you can bake it, but you can actually put these droplets under your tongue and it'll dissolve very, very quickly, get into your system and provide the medical benefit of it. So there are definitely forms of marijuana that are out there in dispensaries, and I also want to clarify that our, our role as physicians is a little bit limited in the sense that what we can do is we write a letter that says we will, we will sort of be okay with them doing that, but we do not actually dispense the cards, we do not actually dispense the marijuana. And so it is up to the patient to go to the dispensary, not only to get the card, but also to get the actual, actual, actual delivery method. What I do suggest to the patients is that they look into these, these droplet forms because I've, I've seen patients anecdotally tell me that it's been very, very effective for them. So again, there are non-smoking effective ways of using medical marijuana. Now, some people do smoke and feel like that's the way they want to use it, so again, that's, that's sort of where, where do we want to fall in terms of providing that right?
Again, the distinction between smoking and vaping.
Right, so again, there's, there's not, to me, enough research to back that up, so I don't, I don't know, I don't know answer that, but I do tell people, look, there are other ways to do it, so if you, if you, if you feel like you have to smoke it, then, then you have to smoke it, but, but there are other ways to do it and get a good effect.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I have a slip from Barbara Ebel.
Barbara Ebel, I was going to stay out of this one, but as somebody who's been involved in property management for fifteen, twenty years now, I personally would be much more comfortable if this was a city ordinance, because I know when I was doing property management in San Francisco, you have to be so careful about discrimination, and I don't know if, if there was a non-smoking building, if that could be taken as a good discriminatory, just, I would be concerned as a property manager that be taken as a discriminatory act, if I was a property manager or the building owner was doing that on their own and not as part of an ordinance, so. And the only other food for thought I want to throw out there is, when smoking was big in like the forties and fifties, it was promoted as healthy, so I want to really keep that in mind when people tell you that, I would like you to keep that skepticism in mind when people tell you that e-cigarettes are safe, because I'm not willing to buy it yet. Thanks.
Thank you. I have a slip from Tom Hines.
I simply wanted to reiterate what Dan Carter said, my only concern tonight is the medicinal cannabis portion. And the proper terminology is medicinal cannabis. Marijuana is slang, might as well call it pot. Since your last hearing on this, you kept referring to a doctor, and this was only one doctor's report, and you know, there's an old saying, seek a second opinion, and I didn't realize till just now that it was someone related to someone on the council. And since that last meeting, I went to see some people I know, and I asked them if they could provide us with some information, because I really do not want you guys to vote out of ignorance. So several of those people responded, and I put together a little packet for you. So, several of those people responded, and I put together a little packet for you. So, I urge you not to attach the medicinal cannabis portion to this ordinance.
Thank you.
And, and look over this other additional material. One thing in particular, I, you don't have to look at it now, but apparently this was from a, several pages from a book called Cannabis Pharmacy. And what caught my eye in here was the, a little map of the history, and this goes back 6,000 years. Cannabis was used as a medicine for 6,000 years. And it wasn't until it reached the United Kingdom and the United States that, I guess our pharmaceutical industry couldn't handle it. So, they put a ban on it. The AMA was all for it. They, they recommended continuation of its medicinal properties. But being a medicine, the pharmaceutical industry wanted its control, so they simply outright Lastly, that's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
I have a slip from Seraphina Kernberger? Kernberger, I'm sorry. You can correct me when you get to the mic.
Hi, my name is Seraphina Kernberger. I am the daughter of Carolyn Kernberger, who has attended previous meetings as regards this issue, and I'd just like to voice my support of this ordinance as it pertains to tobacco smoke in multi-unit housing. I look forward to the day where I and my husband and my two very young children can sit in our own living room and sleep in our own beds without smelling our neighbor's smoke, which is the current situation. Thank you.
Thank you. And Nick Corman?
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to address you guys. I posted something on the Facebook site, a lot of people commented on it, I appreciate it. I had some comments here, but I modified them a little based on what I learned. The first thing that I think I learned is that this came about because of one complaint, one resident complaint. So, the city council, based on your website, adopts ordinances and resolutions necessary for efficient governmental operations. So, one complaint led to a 26-page ordinance. I don't see how that's efficient governmental operations, but I'm going to turn more to the topic at hand. A lot of people have spoken about medical marijuana. When I read this ordinance, if you guys have read it word for word, to me, it reeks of condescension. But what I also learned today is that the ordinance that it seems that you guys want to put in about medical marijuana, San Mateo County decided not to do that, why? Because of legal guidance. So, it sounds like we're contemplating putting something in an ordinance that some attorney, at least in San Mateo County, thought was illegal. I don't think we want Brisbane on the receiving end of a lawsuit. The second issue is signage. I can't tell where signs might be in Brisbane if this is passed. I can't. I'd like to know, because I'd like to know what the city's going to look like. Is it going to be the city of stars or the city of no smoking signs? If we don't know the answer to that question, let's figure it out. Let's really figure it out. Let's just not copy and paste stuff off the internet and off San Mateo County things and put it together and say, this is an ordinance that we now need. So, let's figure out this signage issue. I think all of us care about that. Finally, we've talked a lot about multi-unit housing. Do any members of the council live in a multi-unit house? Just out of curiosity?
Nope.
Okay. So, the entirety of Section 8.46 is eight pages long, impossible to read, and is about smoking in multi-unit residences. I own a condo in Brisbane. My view on this is it's covered by the CCNRs. I asked my board president and property manager about it, and they agreed. They said, when I emailed them yesterday, quote, "The migration of secondhand smoke between units would be covered by nauseous fumes and nuisance clauses." They also confirmed there have been no issues relating to smoking. I don't understand, after reading the ordinance, exactly what you all want the HOA to start doing. When I go to my HOA board meetings, we focus on important issues. For us, important issues are things like making sure we have enough reserve funds for our roofs, trying to figure out ways of conserving water, which is important for all of us, and making sure that we have the kind of community that we want. There was, we don't spend a whole lot of time talking about smoking. We spend a whole lot of time making sure that we have a good community within Brisbane. That's pretty much all I have to say. I'd really like to see this proposed ordinance basically reconsidered, based on all the information you've gathered, try to make it right-sized based on perhaps this one individual's original complaint, and anything that we feel is outstanding relating to public smoking problems in Brisbane, and I don't even know that we have one. And let's start there. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Bussi is the next slip.
I want to talk about smoking, but I'd like to offshoot for one second to Clark specifically. You mentioned Veterans Day. Couple of years ago, I talked to Wendy at City Hall about the city honoring just the World War II guys that were still alive, and women. Wendy talked to Clay, Clay talked to the mayor at the time, who thought it was a great idea, you were the mayor, and nothing has happened. It's over two years ago. So, that's why I was surprised when you mentioned the vets. So, what I'd like to suggest, get the cops or firemen to pick up those few old guys that are still alive and escort them here to the get-together, because like John Clancy above the hardware store, John's probably in his 90s, I think he was on the Missouri, he was our first postmaster, correct me if I'm wrong. And there has to be others still alive in town, and that would be a nice last-minute gesture to have them picked up and escorted here and returned home. Since I brought this up to, through Wendy, who has died, is Jess Salmon, John Gomez, recently, Dolores's husband, John Fasson, if you remember John, he was a Navy man, and he's always had a cigarette in his mouth. I used to go visit him often. So, if that's possible through the city, maybe you can get the cops to do that or the firemen. Now, as far as the smoking goes, I smoked for 44 years, two to three packs a day, Lucky Strikes and Camel's, never a filter. I tried the filters, obviously common sense, and I got a headache. Every time, I'd bum a cigarette, different brands, I got a headache. So, I figured I may as well die from the tobacco, whatever's in the man-made chemical. I miss it to this day. If there's someone smoking, I gravitate to it. I'm not exaggerating, that's my wife. I miss it. And the only reason I quit was to shut people up from nagging me, but I'd go back to it tomorrow. Not to that degree, but there's some people like me that when they get up tight, it's a release mechanism. You can call it whatever you like, it could be booze too, but smoking helped me. So, all I'm asking is that, I can't believe two or three people had the audacity to even think to just pull this off. It should be a vote of the people. And I was outside in the hallway tonight, waiting my turn, and I looked at the founding fathers, five of them, one of them is your dad. I wonder what they'd say tonight? Those guys that came back, lived through the war, and fought to create a city, stop the mountain from being bulldozed into the bay for another foster city, provide your schools, your streets and everything else, what would they say? I would think it should be a vote of the people. And I don't know what stops you from having a vote of the people, or anything else, the naming of Parkside Village. Who the hell named Parkside Village? Are we going to be like San Francisco and have Nopa north of the Panhandle, Soma south of Market, which it's not, it's South Beach, because I own a big property on South Park? I hope we're not going to get cute. We're small, dinky Brisbane, and why can't we keep it that way? Get a vote of the people, it ain't going to kill you. And I'm for it, I think it makes sense, I know what smoking could do to you, but still, people should be able to vote on it. Thank you for your time, and don't forget the vets.
Tony Varios?
Thank you, council members. I'm at viewpoint at The Ridge in multi-unit housing, that goes from three units per building to five units per building. It was a little bit unclear to me when legal counsel was talking about the signage, whether or not every three to five unit building would require a sign. And so, I slipped her a note that said, the easy solution to that is to exempt the signage on buildings with less than five units. In other words, if you had five units or more, you could put up a sign, one sign on the building. That would generally apply to condos and apartment buildings. That could solve that problem. As far as all the emotional talk that we've heard this evening, my father is going to be 90 years old, if God's willing, for him to make it to January 29th. And he smoked like a stack, like most of the veterans who made it through World War II. And he's tried to quit a couple of times, a few times he tried to quit for his kid's benefits and his wife, my mother's benefit and whatnot, and it never worked. But, one of the things that really does stand out is that in his later years, when he got grandchildren, by that time, the medical science had advanced to a point where, no matter how hard-headed he was, he could understand what the science said, and he wasn't going to smoke around his grandchildren. And, so, I think that that makes a, that's an instructive lesson for people. If you care about your kids and you care about your grandchildren, then you go outside, you take care of your business some other way. It's also clear that, it hasn't been so clear with all the comments that other people have made, that this ordinance is multi-unit oriented. So, people that have a single-family home, like my dear friend Jess Salmon, don't have a problem smoking it to their last breath. And people who, it was further clarified, based on the mayor's question about people that have a single-family home with an in-law unit or a separate cottage out in the backyard, wouldn't apply to that either. So, it seems to me that the majority of people who live in Brisbane who would apply to are people like me, who live in multi-family housing that's relatively newer, in some cases just three units, and have no control. The, a lot of the comments that were made by my neighbor Nick, suggesting that this was a waste of time, I think are very badly misplaced. It's, it's kind of outrageous, the information that the county, that County Representative Chandra presented makes the case, I think, very clearly, and Dr. Liu and the other doctor, whose name I forget.
Several. Several.
Also, I think, make it very clear that it's not just a matter of opinion, and it's not targeting smokers. That seems to be getting lost in the smoker versus non-smoker rights. This is not, this is about the free rights of people, especially children, who don't have anything to say about what they're breathing. That's what the emphasis on this ought to be, it should remain focused on that and very clear. There's nothing, absolutely nothing, if you look at your city staff and the council people sitting next to you on either side, there is nothing that ever gets done on this planet that didn't start with one person, one person's idea or one person complaining about it. That's how every single thing starts. And, so that somebody had the guts to speak up about it, and the concern for their children, and the frustration of trying to deal with it through their homeowners association channel and finding out that nobody would back them up and nobody would enforce that obscure rule that may be in the CCNRs, they don't want to take that on, and it's very easy for them to just push it off. So, when the city does the right thing, as you have had the guts to do, as our elected representatives, you don't have to punt everything for a popular vote. Every hot potato doesn't have to go to the public. Once in a while, there may be something that you decide that that's appropriate for. In this, it's kind of ridiculous, in my opinion. You have the power to do it, it's very clear what needs to be done, and I hope you'll do it. As far as the medical marijuana inclusion and why the attorney for the county decided to carve that out, I can't speak to what that was, but it wasn't necessarily because he felt it was illegal. He may have felt that it wasn't worth the county getting involved in a, in a lot of different lawsuits, because the county is much bigger than the city. It can, it can get attacked from every city in a county. So, there may be a lot more concerns that he had because of that. I can't speak to that. But in Brisbane, I don't think we have to worry about that a whole lot. It's been clearly mentioned that there are different ways to do it. If you want to deal with the medical marijuana situation compassionately and not outlaw it completely, then saying vaping it only would be better than saying, go ahead and smoke it. And one of the big concerns about that, again, that I have is because, and I've got plenty of experience with it. First dope I smoked was in high school, in 1968, I think.
Smoked that one up, huh?
I smoked it secondhand, secondhand, Clark. Never smoked it, I could be like Bill Clinton and say, I never inhaled, except for the fact that while I was playing my bass fiddle and we were cutting class and hanging out in the music room, playing jazz music with some of the best people around, they were smoking it illegally, and they were smoking a whole lot of it. And that never seemed to bother me at that time. But as time went by, and I learned more about this, and I, and I got to a point where I could walk down from my old apartment in, on Nob Hill, on Powell Street, and I could smell that crap a block away. And it's annoying, and I don't like it. And, and if somebody starts smoking that stuff in, next door, in the condo or apartment downstairs from you, you can't get it out of your place, and that's not, that's not right. If, if somebody is dying of cancer, and they have a prognosis that they've only got three months to live or six months to live, and the unfortunate end is that the doctor's right about that, they don't go for a year or two after, then by the time any of us might complain about that person if we did, if we didn't know their, their individual circumstances and wanted to complain about it, by the time it went through the system, they'd probably be dead anyway. So, I don't see it being a big problem. But for those people who, say, have a back problem or some other medical issue, and they go to the doctor and say, will you give me a card and let me smoke dope, because that's the best way for me to get over my pain? Well, those people could be smoking that dope next to you or next to me for 20 years. And I want you to think about that long and hard, that's not right. And, you know, so, I'm as compassionate as the next person, but I believe that Dr. Liu was right when he says there's other ways to deal with it, and if, and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that, I know that you're raising your hand to speak again, but this is a public hearing, so I would like to wait for the rest of the public before... Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak?
Good evening, thank you, honorable city council members. You know, I understand the intent and I sympathize greatly. We want to protect the innocent, you know, and this is where it stems from. It's, it's really a wonderful thing that people care so deeply. You know, what I do think, and I agree with Dennis, that this does involve freedoms though, and civil liberties, and I think that's probably why we probably should consider letting it go to a vote. I know from the presentation, it was suggested that we would wait 12 months or something to enact this anyway or to enforce it. And so, if we're going to wait that amount of time, maybe we should just wait for the next election and put it on the ballot, and let the people decide. I, a problem I had with the presentation was the, the way it was presented and framed was it didn't really compare it to other hazards. I mean, I recognize this is a hazard. It's a real hazard. You know, people are hurt from this. But, you know, 40,000 or so out of 300 million is, is something like .001%. And, you know, I, for me, that I have no point of reference. I don't know what that is in my life. What, what can I compare that to? And so I would like to, to understand that, have some point of reference. You know, for example, you know, alcohol, you know, kills twice as many people, you know, should, it, it becomes a slippery slope. Should we, should we then regulate alcohol as well? Prescription pills kill three times as many people from, from side effects, iatrogenics. You know, should we regulate? Innocent people die from taking prescription pills from unintended side effects, three times as many. Should we regulate that? You know, how many people die from tripping on the sidewalk? Quite a few. It's a huge, it's a huge cause of death in the U.S., falling and tripping. Should we go and fix all the sidewalks and make sure? Because I think that actually kills more people than secondhand smoke. So when you compare it to some other hazards that exist, you know, which, some are actually a bigger priority and actually would save more lives. So nobody's arguing the detrimental effects of smoking. I mean, it's clear, it's obvious. But there are other outstanding hazards, and so this is a moral dilemma. And so if you take action on this, it's a slippery slope. Then maybe you should take action on other things that are even more of a hazard. And when it comes to, to taking away people's rights and freedoms and civil liberties, I think we need to go slow. And so, you know, one alternative is you could, you could pass this without the multi, multi-housing part of it. You could always add that later. You could just let it go to a vote. There's a lot of things you could do. And because it involves personal freedoms and our constitutional rights, we should probably slow down a little bit. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to hear from the people who haven't spoken yet, and then we'll come back. Would you, did you want to speak? I, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
My name is Manilik Michael. I'm a resident of Brisbane, and I just had a couple of things that you cannot compare smoking and which is affecting other people by, from a smoker with, with some things that taking medicine or dying. This is related to the innocent people who have no choice but to smoke, somebody smoke. And you cannot exempt multiple units because I live in a multi-unit. And if I'm, if you exempt it, I'm going to smoke, somebody smoke from next door, and that affects me also. The other thing is medical marijuana, the doctor says there are other ways of taking it and why it has to be accepted. It's, it's a choice for the innocent. Innocent cannot take a secondhand smoke. Doesn't matter. I mean, they don't have a choice. The people who are taking or smoking it have a choice. They cannot, if they don't want, they don't have to smoke, but they cannot affect somebody's life because they have a choice to smoke. No, we don't have a choice not to smoke. So I, I urge you to just, and the other thing, well, the most important thing I came here is we elect people to make laws. Everything goes to vote for the people. The people, they have, they have, we elected you, you have to make laws. Every time it goes to the people, it's, it's not appropriate ways. And why are we electing people if we have to vote on every law? So I think you should vote on it and you should vote the right way to protect the innocent. Thank you.
Thank you. So you wanted to make a correction?
No, I just wanted to add to the list. So Councilwoman Liu, I just wanted to clarify, I left two cities off the list when you asked about those that include e-cigarettes in their multi-unit housing. So the ones that do not are Belmont and Burlingame. The, those that do, Daly City, Foster City, the city of San Mateo, and the unincorporated areas of the county.
You're welcome. Thank you. Karen Cunningham?
Madam Mayor, City Council Karen Cunningham, one more thing, very quickly, I just want to say, please clarify to all of the, the people who are watching that we did elect you to make decisions, and every time a difficult decision comes before you, we hear people say, "Make everybody vote on every single little thing." We voted to put you up here to make decisions for us, and if you could please just let the people who are listening know how much it would cost to put every single little decision to vote. This is a really small decision. It's about smoking and how it affects people, and what does it cost to put something on a ballot for you to vote? Otherwise, we don't need a city council. Sorry, I'm just, I just really, really needed to clarify that, that, you know, if, if I don't like the decision you're making, can we put it on the city, can we put it on a ballot? Can we put it on a ballot? Can we, you know, what's that going to cost us, really?
Thank you. I, I do have several letters from, and emails from the public. I have one from Wayne Hendricks, who is a property owner and an apartment owner, and he states he's against the ordinance as written. And I have a letter from Dale Gieringer, who is the director of Normal, who is, wants to exclude the vaporizing of medical marijuana. I have a letter from Megan Garner, who is not in support of the ban in the way it's written, and is questioning about the vaping, possible vaping ordinance. I have a letter from Daniel Gilmore, who is against the ordinance. He says it goes too far. I have a letter from Renee Marmian, who states that the restriction on 602 goes too far. I have a letter from Lily Peck, who states that the ordinance goes too far. I have a letter from Kim Folian, who is split on it. She is, would like the restriction for e-cigarettes and marijuana not addressed. And I have a letter from Mohammed Bustani, who is in favor of enacting the ban. And a letter from, well, a telephone call from Rosemary Henson, owner of an apartment building on visitation, who says she is in support of the ban. And that's definitely paraphrasing the letters, but I think the general gist of what was received.
I think there may have been some others as well. I remember receiving emails from people that are not on the list that you just read.
If they were sent to me, I asked the city staff to include them in with the packet. There was a lot of comments on Facebook and, and Nextdoor, but those are not part of the public record, and so...
I think they weren't emailed to Sherry, but they were emailed to all the council members, so she wouldn't have received them. But we have received other comments as well.
Okay. I, I can't say. Those are the ones that I had seen and forwarded to staff. There could be others.
Just wanted to make a quick statement that, to the members of the public as well. If, if you're emailing something to the city council, I either need the council to forward it to me or for them to, if they have my email address, to forward it to the city. Otherwise, I, we don't have it as part of the record. So I forwarded everything that I've received to all of you, and it is a part of the record.
Okay. And I believe that everything I've received, I've forwarded to you to put in, but...
I'll go through my emails and make sure that she gets...
There could be other, other emails that were not received, but I think it's pretty evident, we, it's, it's an item that is getting a lot of attention here, and so I guess we should discuss where we want to go with this.
I'll jump out there.
You want to jump out there?
Yeah. I think we all know that smoking's not good. You know, I've heard a lot of testimony, you know, in the last three meetings that we've had on this. And I think 100% of the people are in agreement that cigarette smoke is bad for you. Okay? And then there's, you know, the marijuana and the vaping, and it's a mixed, mixed review, I think. And I've read everything, all the emails, all the data that everybody sent us via the emails, and Tom, I didn't read your stuff yet. A lot of, a lot of good testimony. People are very passionate about this on both sides. But it comes down to, I think, each one of us, where we come down on this, on this ordinance. I know when we do things that we like to, you know, gather information and make the best decision from that information that we can, that's going to benefit the community on a, on a greater good. And, you know, I appreciate the county coming and doing what they're doing from an educational process, and I think that's what this is. And I really think it's kind of like moving from generation to generation is, you know, it's a generational thing that I think, Tony, you, you had hit it on the head about, you know, the, the World War II veterans who came out, probably every one of them smoked, you know, and did what they had to do. First, they came through a depression, then they came through a major war, and then, you know, then they started, started families and everything like that, you know, and so, you know, but it's all changed, you know, and it's been a progressive change as time has been going on. And so when we look at ordinances and stuff like that, you know, there's, it'd be the Mercedes-Benz or the Lexus or the Volkswagen, you know, so...
I wouldn't use Volkswagen.
And, and this ordinance, I think we're hitting the Mercedes-Benz, you know. I think we're putting, let's throw everything in there. And I'm not comfortable with that. You know, it's just, there's a part, you know, that I agree with a lot of stuff that was said, but it comes down to, you know, it, because we're just throwing everything in there, you know, the e-cigarettes and the medical marijuana that, and all the parks and everything that, it, it's somewhat draconian. This is what we're going to do. Boom! You know, and the county's coming from a point of education. And I think the education part, you know, yeah, we put the ordinance in place, but I think we have to kind of step continually to keep stepping into the future. And I think that we have been doing that as a civilization. But to just throw an ordinance is really going to be from here to here, for me, is a little much. The ordinance as written right now, I couldn't possibly vote for it. And I could point out things, a reason why, you know, and, and Tony, Terry pointed out, Tony, I always, what sticks in my head is smoke is smoke, you know, and Terry, you brought up that, well, what about our barbecues in the park? You know, here are people use lighter fluid and they charcoal and those, you know, major, you know, fumes that come out of that, and most of the gas that comes out of that, I mean, there's smoke that comes out, but there's gas that comes out that is carbon monoxide, and you can't see it or smell it or anything, and you're breathing it, you know. You can throw that stuff there and throw your meat on it, man, but don't smoke a cigarette there. It's like, it seems like a little nutty to me in a way, you know, it's like, you know. But I get where we want to go as, as a society, so I, but I think we ought to step it there. So like with regard to our community park, at least have a designated smoking spot that may be more downwind versus upwind, or whether you put it in a barbecue area, you know, I, I think Tony Varios said it right, that, you know, that, you know, we're really trying to protect and, and maybe from the county's point of view is teach this next generation. It kind of goes on with our sustainability ordinance, is we know where we want to go, but we know we're not there yet, and it's going to take steps to get there. And I think it's the same thing, you know, when we do something like this, because, you know, there's always going to be the backlash. You know, it's like a gentleman that says, "Well, how many of you live in a multifamily residence?" And none of us do, you know, I mean, it's just the way it is right now. But I understand we have to start somewhere. But how do we do that, too? You know, I applaud the subcommittee on listening to the feedback we got last time and addressing it with the Marina. But I'm not ready to move forward with the vaping or the medical marijuana. I can't vote on the ordinance with those banning that, you know. We've had, you know, the, the pros and cons of it, and I appreciate Dr. Liu's testimony as an oncologist and, you know, that no way would he prescribe that to his patients and stuff. I had an individual come to me who didn't want to send an email, didn't want it to be public, told me a story about their parent who had esophageal cancer. You know, one of the cancer, my father passed away from, and also, also our former mayor, Cy Boligoff. But I guess apparently they had a tumor in the upper part of their esophagus, and they wished to remain anonymous, and that, you know, when their esophagus finally closed off, you know, they were given medication through the, the feeding tube, and it caused them to regurgitate and kind of went into their lungs, you know, it was like drowning in their own juices, and he found that the only relief that they had was from smoking marijuana. They couldn't take it, and, you know, Dr. Liu pointed out that people have these drops, and I don't, you know, I never said anything about that, that whether they were available at that time or not, but this had happened a few years ago. And I said, "Well, you know, it's kind of one of those situations where a person has a choice, you know, or not a choice, or maybe given it the time." So I, you know, it just comes into private property rights, where people say, like, living on the ridge, got one person, like Tony, saying, "Man, I want my neighbor smoking next to me," and other guys living up there saying, "Who the hell do you think you are, you know, putting this on me?" You know, I mean, and, and I'm, I'm kind of on the private property rights from people who paid hundreds of thousands of dollars for a place, should be able to at least do something in their house, you know what I mean? Is, "We're going to make an ordinance that says, 'Oh, yeah, you paid $600,000 for this home, but you know what? You can't have a party here and smoke on your deck.'" You know, that, that's basically what it comes down to, that you can't do it. And, and so from that aspect, I would really want to separate out multifamily unit housing for people who purchase that, like condos and townhomes, to where we take this to the homeowners associations that allow the county to do their educational program along with the ordinance and allow them to opt into it, whether they want to adopt the ordinance under their CCNRs or their bylaws, and not say, "It's coming from the city." But where they can have a meaningful discussion of what it means. And so as the ordinance is written right now, just saying, okay, apartments, condos, townhomes, that's it, this is where we're at, I, I can't do it. I can't really be yet, I, I've heard a lot of passion or argument both ways, but I think we need to involve these homeowners... but I think we need to involve these homeowner associations to have these discussions on whether they want to accept that. Allow them to be the ones to say, "Yeah, we want that." Because right now you're subject, you know, subjecting, yeah, all the people that purchased these who happen to smoke and I have no idea who the smokers are, who aren't, who they aren't because I heard from, you know, a lot of non-smokers who say this isn't right, you know? So but on the other end, I get it, I do get it, but I, I just think it's like the common theme is like too much too fast. And so that's, that's where I stand on this, so, you know. I'm not ready to pass this. It needs some work. And those are suggestions that I'm making because I couldn't possibly vote in favor of this ordinance the way it's written right now. So.
Thank you. Do we, would you like to make comments?
Sure. Well, Ray and I are the ones on the subcommittee, so obviously we're supportive of this, this legislation. You know, I, I have a couple of things that I want to say in response to some of the public comment and, you know, it's, it's a tough issue and I understand it's, you know, balancing of both sides, but I keep hearing this argument that it's the constitutional right, the property right of people to smoke. And, you know, from what I've read, there is no constitutional right to smoke. It's not a right, you know, it's maybe a desire, but it's not a right. So I think that needs to, to be understood. And it's, it's really about protecting the rights of, you know, we've heard people say the rights of people who choose not to engage in this behavior. People who own their own homes or rent and happen to live in multi-unit housing. You know, I think they do have the right to live in a smoke-free environment in their own homes. Other people may choose to smoke, but that choice, you know, when it gets to the point where it starts to affect other people, that's when I think regulations should come into place. We had one member of the public, Joel Diaz, who said, "Well, what about other things that you can regulate? Like, like drinking?" Well, drinking is regulated, you know? Maybe you can drink as much as you want in your own home, but the moment you step in a car, you better be, you know, that, you can definitely not drink and drive drunk at the same time because that's a behavior that starts to affect other people. And I think smoking in your own unit with secondhand smoke is the same thing. You can do what you want as long as it doesn't harm other people. People asked, "Why, why is this ordinance coming about?" Well, I, I can tell you a little bit about the history of that. So I guess the first thing that started was, it was, I think, January of two thousand and fourteen or so, I, or maybe a little bit later than that. I went to a conference down in LA and heard some talks about, it was the League of California Cities, and there was a talk I went to on e-cigarettes. And I learned about what other cities were doing in, in regulating that because it's, you know, new products that really have, they're not really in many cities' laws yet. So I sent that information to our city staff and I asked them to start looking into it to see what we, we could be doing to bring our laws up to date with these, these new products to make sure that we're covered. And then after that happened, then we received a complaint from a resident, from Carolyn Kernberger, about the smoking in multi-unit housing. So those two then came together in the Health and Safety Subcommittee and that's when we started looking at having legislation that treats e-cigarettes like cigarettes and also bringing in the multi-unit housing piece. So that's how those came together. And even though it's, you know, maybe Carolyn is the one who was, you know, really behind this ordinance with the multi-unit housing, there have been other residents who have said that they've had to endure secondhand smoke for them and their, their families and their children in their homes. So I think that it is an issue that affects more than one person in one family. And, you know, we, as a city, have an obligation to look out for all of our residents and, you know, try to protect their, their health and safety. And the, the laws right now in Brisbane are very outdated. Ms. Scruggs indicated to us that the reason why it's, this process seems to be taking a lot longer and having more road bumps in Brisbane is because we haven't changed our laws on smoking like many other cities have. So while we were looking at the ordinance, we are trying to update it to, you know, come into conformance with the current science and what other cities are doing. So it's not that we're trying to be draconian or do too much too fast, it's that we're actually trying to play catch-up. There's a lot of other cities that have already gone this way and that have had more updated laws. I was very impressed by the presentation by Ms. Scruggs and alarmed at, you know, the data that's out there on the risks of secondhand smoke and secondhand vaping. And it's especially alarming to see, you know, that the rates of vaping are starting to increase among youth. You know, we've worked so hard as a society to decrease smoking and now e-cigarettes have come along. And, you know, I think that we're in danger of reversing that trend. And we don't know what's in e-cigarettes. It's not regulated. And, you know, the, the thought that not only is it emitting all these known carcinogens, but it's also emitting nicotine, an addictive product, and, you know, that could be being absorbed by a bystander without them even knowing it, that's, that's pretty disturbing. Same thing with marijuana. I mean, I don't even know if anyone has or can vape marijuana, but, you know, the thought of someone being subjected to marijuana in aerosolized form by just being, standing next to it, same thing with nicotine, you know, is, that's troubling to me that, that somebody who chooses not to engage in that behavior that's illegal and addictive could then somehow be subject to it just by standing near somebody who is making that choice.
Now, what, what illegal did you say?
Marijuana, right. So someone's taking marijuana for their own medical needs, right? It's not legal for recreational use, yet someone standing next to them can be ingesting it if it's being vaped. I don't know if that-
Okay, I thought you said-
Talking about vaping of marijuana.
Illegal.
Illegal, right. Well, if it, so it may be legal for the person who's vaping it or smoking it, but it's not, it's not legal and it's not a choice of the person who's standing next to them.
Okay, okay. Sorry.
So, you know, one person wrote to me, Nicole Westerkamp, she sent me an email. She's a resident in town, a member of the Mothers of Brisbane. She said, "We believe it is anyone's personal right to use these substances, but smoke that fills the air becomes the concern of anyone sharing that air." So when it affects somebody else, that's when I think something needs to happen. The reason why, with respect to the medical marijuana, you know, that's a, that's an interesting and complex issue and yes, the county went one way and we've, we've decided to maybe make it more stringent, but we wanted to make sure that there were options. And that's why we've put three different options before the council. We're not saying you have to go with just making it, you know, not allowed at all in multi-unit housing. If we feel that it could be used and should be allowed for people who really legitimately medically need it and they can't have any other use, well, that's one of the options. We could say that you have to get a doctor's note saying that it's, that it's medically necessary and that's the only effective way to cure your symptoms. Or we could take it out, you know, I'm, I'm willing to consider that option because I understand the county has, has done that and I don't know what the reasoning for it is. You know, my preference would be to not include the exemption for medical marijuana, but I'm, I'm willing to, to hear the discussion on that. And, you know, basically I think the bottom line is that it's about protecting human health and, you know, we need to make sure that we understand that's the framework that we're trying to achieve and encourage good, you know, more healthy community norms rather than going backwards in time.
Thank you. I think you're up next, Ray.
Okay. I, I think I want to take my initial approach from what Tony Vario said. Because I think we tend to get a little bit lost on what the major objective of this ordinance is and Laurie just said it too. We do not want to subject people, especially kids, to toxic air that's going to significantly harm their health, period. That's the objective. And people are saying, "Well, you shouldn't be moralizing." This is a moral issue. I think it's wrong to subject people who have no choice to toxic air quality that makes them sick. There's a tremendous increase in childhood asthma. And that's one of the diseases, afflictions, that we know that the toxins in smoke significantly increase in kids. And so I think we have an obligation to do something about that. That's kind of where I'm coming from. That's, that's my main concern. I can see all the other things too and everything is a balance, everything is, you know, looking at the different kinds of freedoms that people would like to have. But to me, the most important thing is it's just immoral to subject kids to toxic air quality that makes them sick and may even kill them. It's just immoral. And so to me, the question is, what is the most effective way to implement a program, a policy that protects the kids? That's really my bottom line. And so it seems to me that when we know that thirty to fifty percent of the air in multi-unit residences comes from the other units, there's just no way to prevent that toxic material from getting to the people in those other units. It just happens. Now, maybe if we built our units differently, we could do a better job, but we don't. They are just permeable and the smoke just goes everywhere. And people who live in those circumstances, they know that, but the studies have confirmed it. And so we have a clear indication that we got a big problem. We are subjecting people to something they should not be subjected to, especially kids. So my inclination is to do the best we can to protect the kids. That means in public places, that means in parks. And if barbecues are a problem, ban barbecues too. You know, because we want to protect the kids. That's the thing. And we know when you walk by a smoker, you know it, you smell it, you know the kids are getting it. You know, when you walk by with the stroller and the little babies, you know, when the smoke is just permeating their place, even outside. But certainly in an enclosed space, it's terrible. So the idea that, you know, smokers have, they should be able to do this. They should be able to engage in what I consider immoral activity just is wrong to me. They want to smoke someplace where else where it doesn't affect kids or it doesn't affect people's health? Okay, that's what they want to do, but not where it affects other people where the other people don't have a choice. That's the bottom line. And so I am in strong support of, of the ordinance. There are some maybe complex parts of it that we might be able to make a little bit more understandable. But I think we should do the banning of smoking in the public places and all the places where kids play and certainly in multi-unit residences. Tobacco smoke, absolutely. E-cigarettes? If it can be demonstrated, and it seems to be, that they're almost as bad as tobacco, then we should ban that too. Medical marijuana? The director of the Support Marijuana Reform Law says that if you just let them do vaping, you know, but you can ban smoking and other means of getting it, of course. I could go with that. Because that is, that's a sort of a, you got a health issue on both sides there. So that gets, you know, you know, difficult to balance. But we also know that the smoke from medical marijuana is also very toxic. Not only is it smelly, we're not worried about whether it smells bad or not. We're worried about what it does to people's health, 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 health. It kills people. And we don't want to do that. And if we have something that we can reasonably do to improve the health of our kids, let's do it.
Looks like you're up with- First of all, I just want to thank people who sent in the emails to us. Yeah, I read them all and I apologize for not getting back to everybody. I got back to some. I'll do a better job of that. You know, when I was a kid, when I was about four years old, my dad was having a poker game at the house and I had a bad asthma attack. I came downstairs and they had to rush me to Kaiser. This was on Spruce back in the day. And, you know, of course, you know, my dad was a smoker and all his buddies were smoking and they couldn't help me at that Kaiser, so they had to put me in the ambulance and take me down to Redwood City and I had to spend three days in a, in a tent, you know, to, you know, recover from the asthma attack. But even though I had that situation, you know, my dad never quit smoking, you know, he continued to smoke in the house and we had this, this area called the TV room. And I can just still in my mind's eye see that room, just, just the layers of, of smoke. And of course, if you want to watch TV, you had to go in that room. And, but, you know, I mean, that was, you know, that was my dad's castle and, and he was also, you know, addicted to nicotine and it's hard to, hard to quit. You know, did it, did it affect me long-term? I don't know. I mean, I hope not, you know, knock on wood that I'm okay. But, you know, it, it did kill my dad, you know, when he was fifty-eight. He, he died of squamous cell, which is cancer of the tongue. And even though they, they cut out about a third of his tongue, kept smoking, kept drinking too. But, yeah, that, that was, that was my dad and he smoked all the way till the day he died and, you know, he's only fifty-eight years old. So, you know, in this document, I, I don't know how much, you know, this document all of you had read, but on page ten, there's, there's this area here and I, it's in the whereas and-
This is on the ordinance itself?
Yeah, the ordinance itself and it's the third whereas and it's the last number, number four. And, and it says, "To strike a reasonable balance between the needs of persons who smoke and the needs of non-smokers to breathe smoke-free air. And to recognize that the need to breathe smoke-free air has priority." And so, I'm sorry, it's page ten of-
Middle of the page.
The ordinance, six oh two.
Of the ordinance.
This one, Terry, right here. Six oh two.
Okay, I think you had it.
I'm sure I do. Just looking in the wrong spot. There, all the pages have the same numbers in different places.
Pull your thing apart there. I mean, pull the-
It's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, anyways, um- Listen to his- So it's, you know, I was trying to strike that balance. It isn't about, you know, the rights of smokers and the rights of non-smokers, you know, battling each other. It's, it's trying to find a way so that people who are exposed to, to smoke without their acceptance, they have options. You know, right now, there isn't an ordinance that provides some rights to those folks who are exposed to the smoking of others. And so that's what this is trying to do in the public places and in the multi-unit buildings. If, you know, I was talking with our, our city attorney, you know, about this yesterday. Just trying to really dig down deep into, you know, what does this mean as far- Just trying to really dig down deep into, you know, what does this mean as far as enforcement? And, you know, are we going to have the police coming to people's homes and tell them they can't smoke, and they're going to write tickets? And, you know, and that isn't what it's about. It's really, you know, if you're being exposed to someone else's smoke, that there's a law in place to protect you. And right now, we don't have that in place. And so, but we don't want to have it so over the top where it's infringing on, you know, our rights to kind of do the right thing on our own. But sometimes that doesn't always happen. Sometimes you have to have that law. And so there are things like the signs, you know, I think that's a little over the top. I'd like to reduce that. There was a part where, you know, having landlords be responsible for kind of enforcing these things. Like, okay, if you see someone smoking, you got to tell them you can't smoke. And, you know, it's, there's a part that's in there, and I'll, let me pull that up. Owners must comply. And, you know, any landlord who has properly posted signs in accordance with this chapter will be deemed to be in compliance with this chapter. You know, the ordinance should only be used if someone complains. And we know that there hasn't been that many people complaining. You could have someone who's smoking in their multi-unit building and not affecting someone. And if someone's not being affected, then I don't have a problem with that. It is difficult, though, because when you make a law, then you feel like you have to enforce it, and you have to follow it by the, you know, by the strict letter. But you don't have to do that. You know? I think there's some room here. But what's written isn't it. And so the county has an ordinance. I know that we've expanded upon that. I like the areas where you've identified as being beyond what the county has put in their ordinance. But the other items, no. And so the medical marijuana part, I think that, I think we should stick with what the county has. The vaping, I don't know if it, I don't think we, I don't think the, you know, the science is there to support that it's just as bad as cigarette smoke. And so I would exclude that as well. So I'm kind of, in a little bit where you are, Clark, but I'm also in agreement where you guys are too, that we need to have something. And I think it's important. I think we need to have something in place for those people who are exposed to the smoke that isn't, you know, that's beyond their will.
Cliff, if I could just clarify, is I'm not saying I'm against the whole ordinance. I'm against parts of it that I can't possibly vote for, and that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I know, and I know that's what you're saying there.
Can you clarify, Cliff, when you said vaping, you think we should exclude this? Is that only with respect to the multi-unit housing issue? Or e-cigarette regulation at all?
So... You know, I feel I don't have enough information still on the vaping. I know that the county and the state have coupled cigarettes with vaping, and it's all tied together. But I know that some people do it in order to not smoke cigarettes. And, you know, that's just from information that I've read. And, but again, I don't know that much about the vaping part to tie that in altogether. Cigarette smoking, for sure.
And can you clarify where it is that you're talking about? The tenant enforcing, or what part is it?
Landlord.
Yeah, so it's on page fourteen, section eight point four five zero seven zero. And so I asked the city attorney if, you know, if we could eliminate that from the ordinance.
What page is that?
Page fourteen.
If I may respond?
Yeah.
The section is, bottom of page fourteen, eight point four five point zero seven zero, Owners Must Comply. This is in the section of the ordinance that deals with the smoking ban in public places. So this provision does not apply to multi-unit residences.
It doesn't? Oh, okay.
And so this, when it talks about the landlord in this sense, we're talking about a commercial landlord. And so this is making sure that someone who owns a commercial property and has leased it to a business to run their business there isn't on the hook for not complying with this ordinance. So if you own a commercial property, basically what this is saying, if you post a sign that says, if you post a sign that's in accordance with this, saying there's no smoking in this establishment, then you as a landlord, as a commercial landlord, has done, you've done what you need to do. So this is not a provision that would apply in the multi-unit residence situation. And those signage requirements were the ones I discussed earlier.
Okay. And Teresa, you know, smoking on one's deck, so that's their own space. Is that allowed in the ordinance?
In a multi-unit residence situation?
Yes.
It is not. The ordinance defines an individual unit to include any exclusive use area outside of the four walls. So their deck, their patio situation. And smoking would be precluded in all of those areas as this ordinance is written.
Okay. And so then if someone wanted to smoke, they'd have to go to a smoking area? The designated smoking area?
They'd have to go to a designated smoking area, assuming that the, either HOA or the landlord has designated a smoking area. A smoking area may be designated under this ordinance, but it's up to the essentially property owner.
Okay, so if there isn't one, then what does the person do?
They could go to the public street. They could go outside to the public street on the sidewalk.
And so if it's raining outside, and there's a storm, they just have to wait it out or get in their car, drive someplace?
They can smoke in their own car. The smoking areas that a landlord may designate as a designated area are all unenclosed places. So even if there is a designated place, if it's storming or raining outside, you're going to be in a situation where you're going to be out there. You can go to the public sidewalk. None of the public sidewalks with the... If the council were to accept that small tweak I suggested in that one area, then all of the public sidewalks that are adjacent to streets would be an area where someone could smoke or vape or, under this ordinance.
Public streets, not necessarily private streets.
The private streets, I will have to take a look at that really quickly. The private streets are not part of the ban. The private streets aren't part of the ban. If it is purely privately owned, it would be up to the owner to decide what to do with it.
I'm thinking of up at the Ridge condominiums, the sidewalks that are outside the units are part of private streets. They're not public streets.
So the ban on...
Sidewalks that are on the private streets, like Lippi Park is a private street. And the sidewalks along that street would be...
The sidewalks are not part of the ban. The only outdoor areas that are covered would be the outdoor areas that are the parks. It would include the outdoor areas in a multi-unit residence. But if you're outside of a multi-unit residence, the sidewalks that run through it are not an area where the smoking ban would apply.
Okay. I think we're going into a gray area that might be more gray than we're going to.
All right. So then, looking at the, some of the public places. So, and we talked about that. So, for example, the stairways that we have that connect to the various streets. So you could be smoking on the sidewalk, get to the stairway, have to put out your cigarette, walk up the stairway, then you could light up your cigarette again.
So it's my understanding that the stairways you're referring to are essentially these, some of the outdoor public trails that are enumerated at the bottom of page thirteen.
Yeah, like the Mono and Klamath Walkway, the Bicentennial Trail, the Upper and Lower.
Yes. It's my understanding that there are stairways on these trails. So those stairways would be a place where the smoking ban applies as it's written. But the public sidewalk leading up to those trails are all areas where smoking would be allowed.
Okay. And then the penalties. So there's the hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, and then the five hundred dollars. And that's for both the commercial and for the multi-unit. But we could have, we could start off with a warning as the first, you know, I guess, I guess it wouldn't be an infraction if it's a warning, is it?
It wouldn't be an infraction if it's a warning. It is my understanding that there will be a significant education phase that the county will be spearheading, should the council adopt a smoking ban. And so really, the first calls would go, would end up being going forwarded to the county to help just sort of educate, and citations aren't going to be issued at that point. Once we get beyond that stage, the whole idea really is to get people to change their behavior so that individuals who don't have a choice are not subject to the secondhand smoke. And so it's my understanding that, you know, both from the county perspective as well as from the police department, that the initial calls will be really more about educating. Once we get beyond that stage, that'll be the point at which citations would be issued. That said, you could certainly, if you choose, draft into the ordinance that, you know, a first-time call for an individual, you know, they should be issued a warning rather than a citation, as long as, you know, this is the only violation. You can draft that in if you like. But it's my understanding, and perhaps the police department can address this issue, but it's my understanding that that would really be the intent on how it's enforced anyway, even as written.
That's right. Generally, with everything we do, we start out with the education before we do any enforcement. And like we've already heard, the other agencies, there's only been one citation written in eight years since they've had the ordinance. So I think we'd take that approach and probably be successful in handling it that way.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, so Commander Meister, I mean, this is really a complaint-based type of enforcement, right? I mean, when someone complains, that's when you would investigate the situation and assess and then determine whether or not this person is smoking. And if they are, then you provide the warning. And I guess if there was a second complaint, then you'd go back. And if it was that, if that was the case, then you would then write the ticket?
Yeah, I think it would depend on the situation, you know? I mean, as we rolled this out, we'd come up with some type of plan in terms of education leading up to enforcement. And what that looks like, I'm not really sure yet until we have the ordinance and we can sit down and kind of work some of those things out. But certainly, it's not our intent with this type of ordinance to be proactively seeking out people violating this type of ordinance, this quality-of-life type situation. We would certainly work with the people involved to get compliance voluntarily before doing enforcement as a last resort.
Okay. Now, that makes sense. All right. That is it for now.
So I have quite a few issues with this ordinance, and mostly that I think that it goes too far, including medical marijuana. And it is extending its reach on vaping and e-cigarettes beyond where the county's comfortable. And I think it would, could, open us up to legal issues for regulating both the medical marijuana and the vaping and e-cigarettes. As everybody probably knows, I am a smoker. And it's not a good thing for people to smoke, and I understand that it's not a good thing for people to smoke. But it does make me perhaps a little more sensitive to some of the regulations that are going down here. And I do think, for me, that we should protect people in the public. I think that that's perfectly fine to do, and that, you know, the designation between, you know, whether you're twenty feet from a building, or thirty feet, or standing on the sidewalk or in the middle of the street. I think that our trails and our public parks and those kind of places should be smoke-free. And I, and it really doesn't matter if they're smoking medical marijuana or pretty much anything else. There is a big difference between vaping and smoking a real cigarette and e-cigarettes. They are not all the same. And I think that it really needs to be done at a higher level on what those products really are. Because some of them are no nicotine, some of them are glycerin and fruit flavors, some are nicotine, some are marijuana. They all sort of look the same. They all have a different reason. And I think that a lot of the products are, you know, the flavored bubblegum stuff that may not even have nicotine, and may not have anything bad in it. And it may smell, whereas an e-cigarette doesn't usually have any smell at all. So that doesn't mean it's not giving out something bad. I don't know. But I think that the government that is able to make those distinctions and regulate those products need to regulate those products before we try to. So for me, I think that the other big problem is for condos and multifamily homes that are owned by someone who purchased a home that now is going to be regulated beyond what us in our single-family homes are regulated. And I think that while the last two or three weeks, the public, our public has been made aware of this through social media and word of mouth, I think we could have done better than a ten-day notice to the Homeowners Association in bringing this up to a lot of the places that have the biggest impact for their residents. So I'm more on the line with Clark of putting it off so we can look at some more of these issues and see what we really want to do. And I'd like to sort of know what our... I know the county is not saying why they did not include some of the issues, but it sounds as if it came from their legal staff. And it may be that it's opening them up to legal interpretation. And we're a really small city. So one of our residents asked how much it costs to bring something to the vote. And, you know, that may be a hundred thousand dollars to bring an item to a vote here in our little town. But how much legal cost could it be if we open up a lawsuit for something that is more extensive than anyone else has? It doesn't have the condo exclusions that Daly City has. It has vaping and e-cigarettes that Belmont doesn't have. There's a lot of issues that are going to be brought all together if we pass this ordinance.
Terry, a question from what you just said. In the beginning, you were saying that medical marijuana goes beyond the county, and I understand that distinction. But you also said that e-cigarettes and vaping, that this ordinance goes beyond what the county has. And I don't understand how that is. So can you clarify how this goes beyond what the county is blessing with respect to e-cigarettes?
I think that we look at, it may not go further than what the county is. And we've gone back and forth on so many distinctions between different jurisdictions. But the items themselves are very different. And most of the time, people who speak of vaping are speaking of, that I know of, are marijuana. And so it's a difference of semantics.
You know, I have some questions to this, to the subcommittee. So... So um. So if there's a multi-unit building, but there isn't a designated smoking area, would you guys talk about that, and like, you know, we're, you know, like, would it be okay if maybe they smoked on their deck, if they smoked outside? Yeah, I and I know that you you're very passionate about the health of 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 others, and and I think we all are. Um but, you know, is is there some, you know, as we dive into this thing, is there, can we take some smaller steps? You know, can we try things out, like smoking out on your deck, and if there isn't a designated smoking area?
Well, do we really want to be be encouraging people to go out and smoke on their decks where they could have neighbors with open windows?
Well, I, you know, um. If you. If someone's complaining, of course, then that's when the ordinance would essentially kick in. Because then the police would come and and investigate the the complaint. If um if the police, if there wasn't a complaint, that person could smoke ten, fifteen years, and and no one would know. Um and and may maybe that's, you know, when you look at the amount of people that have um that have actually called in, i- it's it's extremely low. So um, you know, I'm just.
We did talk about.
Yeah, I'm just asking, you know, I mean, because you you spent a lot of time with this, and so.
Yeah, so at the subcommittee meeting, I remember Renee Marman was there, and she voiced concern over the issue of people not being allowed to smoke on private decks and balconies. And what was explained to her was that, that's correct, they wouldn't be able to smoke on the private decks and balconies, but that, but they would be able to go outside and smoke on the sidewalk as long as it's, I think, twenty-five or whatever required number of feet away from the building. Um and and you had said before, what if, what if it's raining, are we going to make people go outside and smoke? Well, what if it's raining and a neighbor is breathing in smoke and can't go outside because it's raining to get the fresh air? So I think the argument kind of cuts both ways. Um and I don't think that having, you know, to require a resident or a guest to go out, to step outside onto the sidewalk or public area of the street, you know, you know, near the street, um to to smoke. I I I think that is a good balance, because then it protects the people who are in their homes.
So did you guys ever look at um, you know, these these smoke eaters, so these vents that suck up air? And I know that.
One mentioned it.
Yeah, and so we know that it's not going to suck up all the air. You know, some will, you know, permeate through the buildings, but, you know, it's all about the the amount of exposure. So if the exposure is very low via the use of these um uh machines, you know, is that something that um you guys looked at? And because in the end, it is about exposure levels.
Well, yes and no. Um according to all the federal agencies that regulate tobacco smoke, because we do know about that, there is no such thing as a safe exposure level to cigarette smoke, period. I mean, even if you do reduce the intensity some, whatever's left is still bad for you. So I mean, that's that's the problem. I mean, there isn't any such thing as a as a safe level. And so even if you are able to reduce some, and I don't have any idea about how those work, or whether that really is possible or not, but even if they do, uh you still have some, and that sum is dangerous.
Okay, so I know you were saying it was thirty percent.
Thirty to fifty percent is uh in a multi-unit shared from throughout the whole building.
All right, and then if um eighty percent of that thirty percent or ninety percent, you know, was was eight, you were able to capture that, that's still um.
Well, the federal agencies consider that still bad for you, for the health of the people who are ingesting the secondhand smoke.
I'm just.
Yeah, I think Ms. Scruggs answered that question.
We don't have evidence, you know, for the e-cigarettes on that, but on tobacco smoke, that that's pretty clear.
Okay.
And we don't really have it on the marijuana smoke, or the vaping of marijuana.
Well, I I can, I I think we're unanimous when it comes to cigarette smoke in more apartment buildings. And we kind of have this this split where the conversation goes off with the medical marijuana and the e-cigarettes. You know, I'm hearing that, you know, I'm not ready to go there, and I don't think Terry is, and it sounds like Cliff's not either. Um but in regards to the multi-units that's owned by people, the condos and townhomes is, I think, where we need to take a look at, maybe working with the homeowner associations of really where they're at, y- you know what I mean? Because they they need to participate in this. If we just adopt the ordinance, you know, I think there's going to be backlash on that, that uh, and I'm not sure what the legalities are on it. You know, like what I suggested earlier, is have them and opt, be able to opt in. I think if they have meaningful conversations up there that include the county from the educational standpoint, then we can get there.
Uh I, you know, I I think that you do need to have an ordinance, because I think you need to have the the police to be able to come to the door and if someone complains, I think if you if you don't have that, then you 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 don't have any teeth. So I I think there needs to be some teeth, but I'm I'm trying to see if there's, is there a, you know, is there some kind of compromise or some kind of balance that you guys were talking about?
Oh, there's those three options with respect to medical marijuana. That's on the table for discussion.
I agree with the teeth, uh Cliff, I'm I'm just saying that, you know, I want the homeowners' associations to say, yeah, this is where we want to go collectively, having with their residents who are paying hundreds of thousands of dollars for these homes. And and.
Yeah.
There was no smoking ban when they bought this, okay? People moved in there knowingly, right? And and so, you know, I know. And and I don't know what the mechanism is. I I don't, that's where I'm struggling.
But then, you know, someone's actions shouldn't jeopardize the health and happiness of somebody else. And and I think that's what we're trying to really capture here, and so.
That 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 is, that is where we're going, but I mean, but at the same time, you know, people made this investment, you know, that, you know, if they can't have a party and people can't go out on their s- deck and smoke or something like that, that, you know, it it's, oh, I'm sorry, you got to go out to the.
No, and and that's where, and that and that's where, that's where I'm trying to get that conversation going, is that, okay, does it have to be going out to the street? Or are there other, you know, options available for that smoker?
Well, the HOA can decide, or the, you know, the landlord can decide to designate a smoking place, but that's at their choice and their expense. So I don't know how often that happens, but but it seems like, you know, we, compared to many other cities, we really don't have as many um multi-unit housing residences. So it, according to Ms. Scruggs, with the, you know, education campaign in other cities, it hasn't really been a problem. You know, once the HOAs are educated on it, um everyone seems to comply. So I I wouldn't anticipate the problem.
Condos out of it, you know.
Yeah, but there, we, there were a number of questions we actually asked and got answers to. Uh and we asked, you know, so why this exemption in Daly City? And the answer was, there was one individual who was very loud and very boisterous and very active politically and complained and complained and complained, and the council said, oh, okay, we'll exempt condos. Then this gentleman died, don't know what he died from, but we can guess. Now I understand that Daly City is going to include condos. That's what we were told.
Mm-huh.
Well, they they.
So it, you know, the, a lot of it depends on local political circumstances, as we all know. Um and and the one question I I wish we had an answer to, and and we don't really yet, is so why did the the county, you know, exempt medical marijuana, you know, totally? Um, you know, why did they do that? And I think it would be interesting to know what, if there were legal reasons for that, what those legal reasons were, and that's something we should find out. Uh and we don't know yet, uh and we did ask, but uh we don't have an answer to that.
Well, we could always go back and.
So we can, we can check that out.
Yeah, I I would suggest, you know, I I I feel strongly that we should move something forward, and I I think Ray probably feels the same. Um I'd like to propose that i- if the council's not comfortable with including the medical marijuana um part, you know, to not include the exemption, then we go ahead and we include the exemption, mirror the county's ordinance. Um and then, you know, everything else, I think, can stay the same. I I I think that, you know, I I do feel that e-cigarettes should be treated just like regular cigarettes. The county's done that, every other jurisdiction has done that, except Belmont, only because they enacted their ordinance first before e-cigarettes were even invented. Um and I wouldn't be surprised if they came along later and 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 did, you know, regulate e-cigarettes and multi-unit housing. So so I I'd make that suggestion that we, you know, I'm I'm hearing from the council that there's not consensus to have that medical marijuana um proportion, and and from members of the public. But but the rest of it, I think, should stay in.
Okay, uh you know, there's the issue about the signs. And so um do we need to have the signs posted at, you know, at every um multi-unit building? I'd say it'd be a duplex or triplex. I don't think that we do. Um landlords have lease agreements, and usually in the lease agreements, they tell them not to smoke. But if uh if they're okay with the smoking, uh to me, it's a, it seems to be probably a mutual um agreement. And, you know, if they want to smoke, then they should smoke, if that's what they choose to do, as long as it's not infringing the rights of of someone who isn't a smoker. Um so I I I would take out the sign part of the ordinance.
May I just clarify, are, I, my understanding is you're talking about.
I'm talking about the.
For the multi-unit residents.
Unit, and that is in there.
That would be eight point four six point zero six zero.
That is correct.
So then the only sign, um the sign requirement that would be left would be um the requirement that if there is a designated smoking area, that that area be designated as such. Um and that is in eight point four six zero three zero.
Now, in regards to the multi-unit, there are some very large multi-unit uh buildings. Maybe there could be one sign or something, I mean, but I, you know, you don't want to blanket the, you know, the 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 complex with these signs.
Yeah, or maybe we could say something like um, you know, signs on multi-unit residences over such and such a number, you know, like over ten units or something like that, and therefore you wouldn't obviously need on the townhouses and so forth.
Well, let me, let me clarify for Cliff, not to get off subject here, but are you willing to go with what Lori said? Because what she said, I I'm not, you know, because we're not in, I'm still got an issue with the the condos and the townhouses, and I think Terry said that too, so Cliff.
You're talking about the vaping part, Ryan, or what are you talking about?
No, I was talking about how we're who, how we're going to address it, is is I agree with the concept. You know, we could do that for for the apartments, but I'm talking about people that invested hundreds of thousands of dollars up there that need to have, uh I think, a more clear conversation, not just pass the ordinance and then say, by the way, okay, we want to have this conversation now, you know, and and that's where I'm coming from.
It cuts both ways, though, because, I mean, what if someone who's non-smoking invests, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in in a condo, and then they get a neighbor that moves in who smokes?
Right, it cuts both ways, Carl.
Yeah, I I I realize that, and I, but they moved in there under that, and now we're changing the rules, that's all, that's what I'm saying.
And I think there can also be a grandfather clause, that when units change hands, they become non-smoking. Because people who.
Loophole.
May, I'm sorry?
Sorry, I I think that can, there can be, that can become a loophole. People are just going to keep properties in the same name indefinitely then.
Well, I I guess at the risk of moving it along, I.
We do need to extend the meeting to eleven thirty?
You know, I I'd like to take a five-minute break.
I will support that as soon as we get the meeting extended.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
All in favor?
So with that, we'll take a five-minute break. And try to keep it to the five minutes.
Thank you. I agree with you. I just, I, it's not worth it. It's like somebody wanting to footstomp you. I have bad hands. I have bad hands, but this one's really bad. I need to have a phone lock down. I've had it taken out of both my feet and my hands, little hand, but this one needs to be done. But... We did, and we're not even, we're not even halfway through our agenda.
We're back on. Thank you. Come back to order, please. We'll continue, continue the discussion. I have to say that I think we left it off in the middle, but if we were willing to move this forward at some level tonight, and I think we had not come to an agreement to be able to do that, at least that I know of.
Right.
But...
I think Ray has something to say.
May I chime in on that?
Of course.
Yeah. I think it's a really complicated issue, which is evident from all of the commentary and the different struggles that people are having with it, members of the public and colleagues. And so, in terms of what I think we should ultimately have, I'm more inclined to, you know, to Lori's position, because we've been working on this for a while, and I really think we have a moral obligation to do something legally. But I can also see that there are a number of things that are not as clear as they could be, or as straightforward, and the rationalization, and the coverage, and therefore, you know, I'm comfortable with, you know, sending it back to the committee again to work on some of these things, but do it expeditiously.
Yes.
Try to see if we can forge some kind of, you know, compromise on this that moves us forward, that brings in, you're never going to please everybody, but we can, you know, try to please as many as we can in order to achieve the objectives, certainly the ones that we agree on. I even had another thought as an instance of things that, you know, I'd like to think a little bit more about, and that is this idea that, you know, multi-unit dwellings can provide places for smokers to smoke, or they might not. And so, I'm thinking, you know, maybe they should all provide a place for smokers to go that's, you know, safe and not going to affect other units and kids and so forth. Maybe we shouldn't leave it up to, you know, voluntary. Maybe would be good to say, you know, multi-unit residences over a certain amount, let's say, you know, 10 units or something, you know, they need to look into providing a place for smokers that, you know, doesn't send them out in the rain, so to speak. And so, I think we can kind of, you know, work on that, too. Keeping in mind that, you know, the objective is to get an ordinance that protects people from having to deal with toxic air that makes them sick and their kids sick, that can be avoided by, you know, proper public policy. But we want to make sure it's proper public policy.
Yes. If I may, Madam Mayor, I want to ask a question to Commander Meisner. So if someone is playing loud music and it's a nuisance, they could call the police, and the police would come to remedy the situation, correct?
That's right.
And the reason they can do that is because we have ordinance that prohibits playing the loud music, or making loud noises that are nuisance, right? But we don't have anything in place right now if cigarette smoke, or smoke in general, is a nuisance to someone.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, you know, just looking at the, some of the numbers here, you know, 87% of Californians do not smoke, 91% of women in California do not smoke, and then you look at, okay, how many units are we looking at in Brisbane that are multi-unit? It's a much smaller, so we're looking at a very small portion of the population. So, just to keep that in mind.
Right. But the irony is that very small percentage of smokers, their smoke permeates the whole darned building. That's the problem.
Well, yeah.
There's evidence for that. I mean, that's...
I don't think we disagree with that, you know, I mean, that the mechanics of it, Ray, you know, I mean, because, you know, when I opened a business four and a half years ago, you know, over there on Geneva, I've had a lot of people that would come around and smoke marijuana, you know? And I'm not talking about medical marijuana, just smoking marijuana, and I literally would chase them off. And I've had a few conversations, you know, was able to have a few conversations with people that, you know, wasn't so combative in the sense that, you know, why don't you go home and smoke it, okay? Why do you come to like a public place? I mean, you're subjecting my grandkids to this, and my customers and stuff, you know, and myself, and, you know, it's just not, A, it's not legal to smoke out here, and just go home, you know, and do what you do in your home, you know? So, you know, I get that, but now we're, you know, taking the home away, and then, you know, people from a marijuana standpoint, I don't know whether it's legal or not legal now, you know, it's just like, how do we get our arms around this, you know? It's a big one. And to me, I think we should step it, because we can always come and change it, you know, as the public becomes more and more educated, you know, where people become more and more conscious as, you know, as we do it, you know, the ads that are, you know, being done on the smoking, you know, I mean, remember, you know, us that grew up in the 50s and 60s, you know, of how the actors would...
Everybody.
Be on TV live, and, you know, I smoke Lucky Strike, and they're good for you, and that's because it's a fine cigarette, you know, and John Wayne, and, you know, and, you know, I mean, that was then. And now, it's, you know, they're putting up the healthy ads about what it does, and even secondhand smoke. I don't think any of us are in disagreement on that at all. It's just the mechanics of how...
Unless I find out how we can protect people from it.
Yeah, yeah, how can we get there, you know, without, you know, like going, you know, because a lot of people are freaked, freaked about it, you know, like, you're going too far, too fast, is kind of a thing. I mean, some people are totally in line with it, and, you know, and I think, you know, for myself, and it sounds like Terry and maybe Cliff are more, wanting to take a more moderate approach to it. I don't think we're in a disagreement to any of the things of what, how harmful it is from a cigarette standpoint. And we're kind of still, the jury's still out on the vaping and the medical marijuana, and I think, so, I think from that sense is you kind of have a sense of direction as a subcommittee to maybe taking a look at these things, taking a look at our condos and townhomes, is like, how do we get our arms around that without, you know, being all-inclusive, and then all of a sudden, it's, you know, we have this major backlash? And that's why I was saying is, maybe somehow find a mechanism of working with the HOAs, you know, beforehand, not after the fact. And I'm not sure how that would work, but I'm consuming.
They were all given additional notice for this meeting, and I don't see any, I don't think we received any response from the HOA managers of any of the...
They probably haven't. I think all the HOAs, before they could respond, as an HOA would have to have a board meeting.
Yeah.
So can you give a little more direction to the subcommittee of what specific issues you'd like us to look into more?
Yeah, I'll start. So, so right now, the state hasn't, let me find that.
Yeah, the situation on the state from the staff report of last time, I believe, is that the state is in the, moving toward the regulation of e-cigarettes.
That's right, but it hasn't, yeah.
And the Senate has passed the bill.
Okay.
But the Assembly has not.
Okay.
It's in the Assembly, but they haven't passed it yet.
Okay.
And similar bills...
So the state is on the verge, but they haven't done it yet.
And that would then regulate the e-cigarettes.
But we can't wait for that, because it's happened, I mean, they've tried before, and nothing's happened at the state level, so...
So, but that's where it's at.
We...
All right. You know, I am for having some, some kind of ordinance. I think that's necessary. You know, I brought up the thing about the noise. There needs to be an ordinance so that people who are exposed to the smoke have...
They have some...
Someone to turn to, right? Right? And they need to have that. And so, the HOA, the HOAs are not going to be able to provide that for them.
No, of course not.
So, that needs to be in place. The, I know you believe that the vaping is just as harmful as the cigarettes, and I don't, I don't know that, and I, you know, and maybe I need more education on that to adopt, you know, to have the cigarette smoke, smoking and the e-cigarettes all...
We can work on the evidence for that. I mean, I'm convinced, but, but, but there is a lot of, you know, studies and evidence we can pull together and...
Yeah, you know, then, you know, some...
Make, maybe make that case.
You know, some of the signage, you know, I like people talk, you know, what people brought up in regards to some things that are grandfathered in, you know, perhaps. I like what you're saying in regards to having some kind of designated area. I mean, if you can't enforce that, then I'd like for you to find some alternatives for those folks. I mean, you know, again, going back to the noise, I mean, no one's addicted to playing their music loud, but people are addicted to smoking cigarettes, and it is difficult for them to quit, and, or to go without until they can find a place to smoke where it doesn't bother someone. And so, there's that, really, just trying to find if there is a balance there. If not, like you said, you can't, you can't satisfy everybody. But the number one thing is that you cannot have something that's negative impact someone who's innocent. And whether or not you have a habit or not, you can't do that. So I don't know if that gives you enough guidance. You know, how about this, Clay? Is it possible to email you sometimes? I mean, it's because it's so late tonight, and then give that to the subcommittee?
Sure.
Okay? You know, I'd rather do that.
Okay, unless there's anything, you know, for the public's benefit, that people feel like they want people to know this being studied.
Well, I think anything going to the, to the subcommittee could certainly be part of the public record.
Sure, it all is.
Sure, it will, it is. Has to be.
Public person.
So, we will extend, can I get a motion to extend the meeting to 12 o'clock?
12:01. So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, aye.
So, I had said one issue was going to be enough for tonight on our agenda. I guess we should have kept it that way.
So we're just going to send this then to...
Back to the subcommittee.
Yeah, but I would ask that, you know...
We're going to email our concerns, I think.
Yeah, I would say, and to do so expeditiously, because the subcommittee wants to move this forward.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you to all the public who came and spoke out on this very divisive issue. So that will bring us to the continued public hearing on the adoption of ordinance 599, zoning text amendment. Are we going to move forward on this since we do have public on this?
Well, staff's ready to move forward. It's the commission's discretion, or the council's discretion, but...
I'm ready to hear it.
Again, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This matter was continued from the September council date. Again, the request is to amend the M1 zone to modify the range of permitted uses. At the meeting in September, the staff was directed to do some research on a few matters, which are addressed in the staff report in front of you tonight. One was the, some issues of sea, of what the impacts of flood, floodplain and sea level rise might be on the VWR site. And you have some maps that are in front of you this evening. I'll go over that real quickly. Again, those maps would demonstrate that the site does not lie within the 100-year floodplain, even under the current, the recent FEMA updates, flood insurance rate maps. You have an exhibit that reflects that, indicates, in terms of sea level rise, there are a couple of maps that illustrate, again, what some of the impacts would be based on sea level rise of anywhere from four to five feet, inclusive with a 100-year storm event. And again, it indicates that in that four to five-foot range, some of the site would be subject to inundation over time. And again, the issue with sea level rise, and these are modeled projections that are subject to change over time, and you're probably aware that the city is working collaboratively with the larger county effort to, to address sea level rise issues in a more sort of regional comprehensive manner. There's a county-wide sea level rise vulnerability assessment that's being undertaken, and the county will also kind of take the lead and coordinate with developing resiliency strategies to cope and accommodate sea level rise over time. So again, any future sites that are, sites that are currently subject to future inundation, we'd expect would be addressed in these county-wide efforts to address resiliency and, and protection of sites over time. So, that was the one issue. The other issue was the status of the remedial action plan and the contamination issues on the site. And again, there's some correspondence, some information in the staff report about the level of contaminations, the kind of contaminants that are found on the site, which are petroleum hydrocarbons, metals, low concentrations of chlorinated solvents. There's a fair amount of body of work in terms of investigation work that's available on the GEO Tracker website through the regional board. And then there was some more recent correspondence from, I think, an email that was provided to you today from the case handler at the regional board, which was indicating kind of some of the issues about whether or not the site could be occupied for commercial industrial use as it's presently zoned. And again, the regional board indicates they would see nothing from what they've seen in the studies done to date that would preclude the site from being occupied for industrial use as it's currently zoned. And you have some documentation in that regard. Last issue was potential transportation impacts, freight forwarding. There was a very brief traffic study that was presented, prepared by the applicant's traffic engineer, that demonstrated the impacts of, really looking at a very... that demonstrated the impacts of really looking at a very truck-intensive freight forwarding use and what the implications might be. Again, freight forwarding isn't really a defined land use category for purposes of traffic. It's, it's treated similarly to warehouse. But to kind of take a worst-case analysis, the, the traffic engineer took some of the traffic generation that was associated with the FedEx application, which was really five times higher than a traditional warehouse. And, you know, applying those numbers, it illustrated that the, the current intersection, you know, at the site would operate in adequate manner under existing conditions plus, you know, development with a very high-intensity freight forwarder. Impacts to Bay Shore and Old County Road, would those, that intersection would not be impacted? And neither would the Bay Shore, San Bruno Avenue intersection, which even under both existing conditions and, and existing plus, you know, this higher-intensity freight forwarding scenario, does not meet the current general plan standard for the functioning of that intersection. So it doesn't appreciably degrade that intersection by decreasing the level of service at that particular location. So those are kind of the three technical issues that, that we did research on, on the direction of the council. Just to be clear of the original recommendation, the, the primary difference between the staff recommendation on this original report and what the planning commission ended up recommending was there were several uses that were proposed for, to be allowed by right. And those were freight forwarding, food processing, and data centers. And it was the planning commission's recommendation to, to make all of those conditional uses, not uses permitted by right. So that's really the issue that's before the council tonight as you consider the previous planning commission recommendation. Then lastly, I would point out that there was discussion at the council meeting in September 17th about the concern that the current M1 zoning category, just by title, is, is in a sense obsolete. It doesn't reflect the adopted 1994 general plan language. And certainly was suggested and discussed at that meeting that a possible solution or way to resolve that would be to, to direct staff to initiate a, another zoning code text amendment to, to bring the current M1 standard and zoning language into conformance with the general plan, the TC category. Again, since that's not substantive to this application, it's staff's opinion, those, you could take action on this pending application, direct staff to initiate that other application. We're suggesting that indeed if the council does take action and introduce an ordinance tonight, that when this were to come back for a second reading, we could also bring forward a, a resolution initiating the, the zoning text amendment. And we'd be very clear as to the council's intent, that gives better direction to staff and the planning commission at that point. So we would, we would suggest that as a companion action if the council wants to move forward with this. Again, the recommendation was that the city council approve the zoning text amendment, RZ 215, and introduce ordinance 599, which is attached to your staff report. That would conclude staff's comments. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do you have questions for staff?
Yes, thank you.
Would you like to start, Laurie?
Sure. So one of the issues in the staff report talks about the environmental issues at the site. And I wanted to hear from staff about, you know, whose jurisdiction is it to make restrictions on the use of the property based on toxics? I understand the Regional Water Quality Control Board is studying the site and expects to have some more information in the future. So would, would that be the jurisdiction of that board or the city?
It will be the jurisdiction of the state agency to make a determination about what, what the cleanup will look like and what, what uses can be made of the property during the cleanup and to the extent there are any restrictions on use of the property after the cleanup. That would fall within the jurisdiction of the state agency.
Thank you. And then with respect to sea level rise, I see there were two scenarios that were looked at. A 4.1-foot of sea level rise plus a hundred-year storm event and then a 4.9 feet of sea level rise plus the hundred-year storm. Where did those projections come from? And what is the, the likelihood, I guess, from the information from, from that site? What's the likelihood of that second scenario, the 4.9 feet? Which was the one that triggered the potential subject to inundation finding?
Well, there is a map and I'll let senior planner Ken Johnson, who's a little more conversant with this, jump in. There's a, a resource called Arc Coast, Our Future, which these maps were generated, the 4.1 and the 4.9. As you're aware, as you're aware, the, sort of the science of, of sea level rise is somewhat subject to change over time. And different scientific data is made available. And, and normally they end up with scenarios that are kind of a bracket. You have a sort of a, a low, a low-impact scenario and then one that projects maybe a, a more of a conservative estimate in terms of increased rise and sometimes a high-end worst-case projection. And what we really tried to do here was to, to find the bracket that might show how this property would be impacted. So to the extent if you had sea level rise, and I'm sure there are scenarios that look at lower impacts or lower, lower sea level rise over time, that wouldn't affect this property at all. So that's not necessarily that informative, I don't believe, to, to your discussion. And then there are other, you know, a much higher scenario that, that would, that would reflect a greater degree or possibility of inundation. So we wanted to kind of show you where it falls in terms of how this site is impacted by, by scenarios that are quite plausible and are being used by, you know, in the science and in the field to sort of estimate the, the future impacts and how that would affect this site. You know, with all this sort of climate sea level rise modeling, you know, again, it's a somewhat, a lot of factors that really aren't fully known. So you have projections that are sometimes 50-year projections, 100-year projections. And so it is, you know, not a real precise science at this point. It's really long-term modeling and forecasting.
Okay, and the staff report talks about the vulnerability assessment that's being done at the countywide level for sea level rise? And that that would include the southeast Bay Shore area? And so what, and it says that, the staff report says, so that would be addressed as part of the city's future resilience planning regardless of the city council's decision on this, on this particular issue. So how would it be addressed in the future in response to that vulnerability assessment?
I think once that study comes out, and I think what we're trying to do is standardize countywide because as indicated, there are different sort of sources of modeling projections and data for what sea level rise might be. So part of the countywide effort is to come up with a consistent model and models. So, so every jurisdiction within the same area affected along the Bay Shore will be using the same sort of projections for, for sea level rise, bay rise over time. You don't want, you know, if you're trying to look at this comprehensively and you figure, well, if you're going to be in Burlingame and Foster City and you're kind of looking at this more holistically, you want everyone to be kind of using the same sort of metrics. And what, what are you planning for? Are you planning for three feet in 25 years or six feet in 50 years? So part of this county exercise is to kind of give everyone in the, in the San Mateo County area a standard baseline for, you know, what are these scenarios that they're agreed upon, you know, in this body? And then you start, they'll also do the modeling of, okay, if it's, we agree on this as kind of the projections we're going to use for planning purposes, then they'll illustrate those areas which would be subject to future inundation. And then once you understand those areas, then the county is also going to be looking at sort of different kind of treatments and potential strategies to, to, to deal with areas that are subject to inundation over time. And again, those will be different solutions based on the, the site-specific conditions. There are areas that you might be able to retreat from and that might be the solution. There are other areas you might need to armor the, the shore or, you know, seawalls or whatever to, to protect them from the sea level rise. So I think that, that series and that sort of suite of, of strategies to deal with sea level rise, that's really what the resiliency strategy is going to be in terms of providing some options for the city. And then I think every city is going to be very site-sensitive in the context of what makes sense. For a developed site, might be very different than a site that you could retreat from or you could sort of pull development away from or, you know. So there are going to be different solutions and I think we're looking forward to them providing sort of a, a menu of, of options that I think from a policy level, the city will, will look at either as part of a general plan update or through some other planning strategy to determine which areas are subject to inundation and what are some of the long-term strategies to deal with those areas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lark?
I don't have any questions. I don't have any questions. No, I don't have, I don't have any questions.
Oh, I thought that was a leading question, meaning a comma and a long...
No, no, I mean, you know, from the staff report, no, it's clear to me.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Just two at this point. On the sea level rise, just to follow up Laurie's question. In our response to the county grand jury, we did reference a very major new study by Hanson et al. And of course, as you say, that you run various models and look at different potential meltdowns of ice sheets and so forth. And their models come up with a fairly high probability, not a prediction, that by 2100 we could be talking about three meters. That's a lot more than, you know, 4.8 feet or whatever. So it's something that needs to be addressed over time, as you say. And the complication of that site, of course, is the existence of Caltrain right there. So they're worried too, because they don't want the rail line to be underwater. So, I mean, there's a whole complicated set of protections that need to go into place there. And of course, there's a lot of places where Caltrain's in trouble up and down the whole peninsula. So how that's all going to address, who knows? But we got to be thinking about it because it's a potential problem. The other thing is, I wonder if you, this letter from the Regional Water Quality Board, so would you talk about a little bit what this person, who is this person and what is their level of responsibility and...
Alex Karpowitz?
Yeah, right, the letter we have. Could you talk a little bit more about that?
Yes, she is the case handler for this particular cleanup endeavor. She is also the case handler on Kinder Morgan, so she does have experience locally. And again, her, her responsibilities are to evaluate, you know, the, the data in terms of the site characterization, evaluate the, the wrap and essentially make the, the professional recommendation as to the sufficiency of the, of the wrap as a, as a vehicle and a tool to, to clean up the site over time.
So as I understand it...
Her, her professional background, I guess she's a professional geologist.
So what's, what comes out of here is the bottom line in your understanding of this letter?
What this letter tells me, you're talking about the email today?
Yeah, one we got, yeah, right.
Yeah, the email today tells me that based on the current understanding of the site, that there is no restriction of using the property for industrial use today. Because I think that was a question about, well, could the site be occupied by anybody, given its level of contamination, until a wrap is, is implemented and approved and implemented? And so the, the point was to try to get some clarity as to that was, was that a, an accurate characterization of the regional board's feeling about the site? And certainly there's more work to be done and, and, you know, there's that caveat. You've got to always find something out, I guess, that would change that determination. But based on the best information she has, and there's some pretty substantial site characterization that's occurred today, that's her sort of professional judgment as to the, the site and, and it's, what constraints it might operate under before a wrap is implemented.
Okay. And, but she also says, I do agree that use restrictions should be placed on the properties such as no homes, daycares, hospitals, schools, et cetera. Now, the zoning actually, I believe, takes care of that, so that's my question.
Correct, any of the sensitive uses that daycare, hospital, school, homes are not permitted in the zone. The proposed text amendment would not allow for those uses. So, so they may, for their own purposes, want to deed restrict the property. But from a practical standpoint, the city zoning doesn't allow those particular sensitive uses anyway. So it's sort of like, I guess, double protection when it, that will always run with the land until such time the cleanup would allow them to lift that restriction. But the city's zoning regulations would still control ultimately.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, you know, I, I contacted Ms. Karpowitz and then she called me back. And so it was good to have that conversation with her, just to confirm what she said in this letter. So, John, you know, in, in regards to the contamination going into the lagoon, so you need access from UPC and, and that, that still hasn't been granted yet?
That's true. I understand from some other correspondence I had from UPC that they're reviewing, there've been some back and forth among their attorneys as to, and they were hoping to have that wrapped up by the end of the week or early next week to have the, the signed right of access or whatever the legal instrument is will allow this to move forward.
Okay, all right. And then, yeah, Ms. Karpowitz, yeah, she said that quite a bit of sampling has been done at the site. And based upon that sampling, the industrial uses would be okay to move forward. In her letter, though, she, she does talk about the, the wrap. She was hoping to get it prior to this meeting. But that, it says, is being held up by the current future owners. And so that's what it says in this letter here. So maybe you could address that.
Hi there, Dan Letter with Prologis. So the question was...
So this is, this is from Alex Karpowitz, from the regional board. I've not received any wraps for the site yet. I was supposed to get one a couple of weeks back, but it's being held up by the current future owners.
The current future owners.
That's what it said.
Current slash future owners.
This was as of October 5th.
Oh, okay. That, that is news to me. I, I believe...
That's October 5th. That's further down in the email chain.
Okay, yeah, so just, yeah, so...
We certainly are not holding any of this up.
No, I mean, it's, it's Univar.
It's, the communication is happening between the current owners. Prologis is under contract to buy this, right? The current owners, Univar, VWR, and the regional board. So I, I, I believe they're putting the finishing touches on the building A. And who particularly has the, that document today versus last week? I'm not quite sure, but it's, it's been gone, it's gone back and forth a number of times. So...
So it's close?
It's, yeah, it's very close.
All right. Those are all the questions I had.
Okay. So I guess that gets down to me.
Okay. So I guess that gets down to me. And...
Oh, time's up.
I guess we need to extend the meeting.
So moved at 12:30.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I make my apologies to the public who are here and at home. We keep talking for the staff. We, we have sea level rise maps for the prior VWR site, but we're really looking at two sites. And this is the VWR site and the, all the industrial way area. And the same way that the sea level rise maps missing from that area, we're also missing the traffic survey if the area that's, um, off industrial way also had a change of use. So the traffic survey doesn't appear to address changes in that area. So we're, it, it seems to me that we're sort of looking at the project, the zoning change as one item and the permitted uses as another, but we're sort of combining them. Can you explain that?
Well, I think, again, there are three areas that are zoned M1. So any zoning request to modify the M1 zoning text would be applicable to any property zoned M1. I think there are a couple sort of factors that, um, when you talk about the industrial way, um, industrial park is, one is that is integrated into the, um, the planning program for the Baylands. So our expectation is that the planning program for the Baylands will ultimately supersede the, um, the current M1 zoning for that particular area. Um, so that's sort of one factor. So the environmental review that was done there speaks to the impacts of change of use in that particular area. It's probably going to more intensive forms of use than, than industrial. Um, in terms of the applicability of, you know, in the short term freight forwarding, you know, and if we should have looked at the traffic of freight forwarding, considering that in industrial way. Um, if you look at the parcels on industrial way, how they're configured, the roadway, um, dimensions, find it highly unlikely that those properties could be converted to meaningful freight forwarding of the kind of scale you're talking about, you know, the very intense freight forwarding of FedEx. If you look at those buildings, their access and the roadway. So, um, again, given their long-term reuse and rededication to repurposing to another use as, as indicated in the Baylands planning program, and the fact that they're not really suitable for freight forwarding in the interim, um, you know, the idea of, of doing more traffic study and more traffic work at that particular intersection didn't seem to be, um, a terribly productive exercise at this point.
Well, then, wouldn't it have been conducive to make the VWR site its own separate zoning parcel if it wasn't meant to affect the areas on industrial, which with the change of use that were listed as conditional in the planning commission's, uh, report would be made, um, by right? And some of those uses are currently conditional uses in industrial and are being used for those uses. Correct?
I'm sorry, you, I, I didn't track your last, you're saying certain uses that are currently operating on industrial way, which is the...
Are, are conditional uses on industrial way. And if this zoning change takes place, it would make them by right uses in industrial way.
Well, um, I, I think what I understood, um, and maybe I'm looking at this a little differently, the only use I can think of that is sort of material, that, that's existing out on industrial way was a brewery that was established. And that's a permit, was determined to be a permitted use under the M1 zone today by pulling out food, uh, distribution and our food processing or whatever that term is we're, uh, land use we're defining. That would probably fall into that category under these zoning regulations. So if you were to make that a conditional use zone all throughout the M1 zone, that would make that particular brewery non-conforming because it's currently was, was interpreted as a use permitted by right. So I don't, I don't know of any uses that go the other way that were conditional and would be permitted by right. That is the only business that is on industrial way that I'm aware of that is materially affected by this zoning change.
Okay, but that brewery would not be, um, shut down. They'd be able to continue to operate.
Correct.
As long as they didn't, um...
Go dormant. Yeah, they'd be subject to non-conforming standards, or they could get a, get a conditional use permit if that was the language that the, the council ultimately adopted for the M1 zone. If you determine food, uh, processing or as a permitted use, then they would be fine in the future.
And so, again, I'm sort of coming back to why we would make all the zoning use changes that affect someone who's not applying for a use change effective when one particular property owner is applying.
I think it's a really good, a good point. And, and possibly, I think there's an opportunity to address this as, as I indicated, there's another sort of subsequent phase of this. Uh, sort of activity would be to bring the general plan of the current zoning category into, uh, conformity with the general plan. So that's, that's a, you know, if you choose to initiate that work effort, i- if you wanted us to direct us to look at differentiating the industrial way portion, so north, um, east bay shore, differently from southeast bay shore, the VWR site, you could provide that direction when we relook at the zoning, if that's the council's direction.
But I thought we're looking at the zoning here.
Looking at the zoning, but we're also going back with some cleanup language, a secondary, like for one, the fact is that the M1 zone, as just by its title, is inherently inconsistent with the general plan designation. So there was some direction given that we should clean that up one way or the other. Um, it's not contingent on this, but that would be a subsequent action. And again, if part of the subsequent action you want us to initiate is take a fresh look, for example, at, at the, um, south, uh, north, northeast bay shore, and you wanted us to treat it differently or look at the, the importance or, I'm not sure that you ultimately need to treat them differently, but if that's something you want us to consider, that's, that's a separate code amendment we could, um, could evaluate.
Um, thank you. And then on the letter from, from the Regional Water Control Board, they really don't have the list of all the contaminants and what the final status of this is. And they're saying that she thinks that once the site is cleaned up, it'll be acceptable for use, but they don't have the actual remedial action plan because they don't have all the data yet. Um, and we don't have what's leaching into the lagoon data. So it seems that we're asking to change the use there before the data is available for what the toxins are going to be and what the toxins would need to be during the process of cleaning it up to make it, to be able to remodel or to do anything with the property. We don't know what those methods are going to need to be yet. So it seems that we're being a little quick on the draw on this, to change the uses.
Um, if I could respond, you know, the, the first paragraph in the memo today does speak to, um, let's see, indoor air has been tested several times inside both buildings, no detections of EOCs above environment, um, ESLs, indicating the foundation is in good shape and keeping harmful vapors out of the building. Parcel A is most heavily impacted by metals, don't cause a human health concern until someone digs below the asphalt and handles it. As long as the foundation isn't compromised or the asphalt removed, site is in decent shape for reuse as is. So, I mean, all I can do is relay the information I have from the regional board. So, and that's, 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 that's what I hear from them at this point. You're right, there ultimately will be a wrap and, and implementation of that wrap. Uh, as of this moment, have we received an indication from the regional board that they're uncomfortable or that, that the, based on the studies that have been done to date, that there's a problem about the ongoing use of these buildings for industrial purposes? The answer from my read of this is no.
In their current state, before they're touched or attempted cleanup.
Yes.
Okay. So, um, I do have a couple slips from the public. Um, I'm assuming that Daniel Letter is...
We know who that is.
On the applicant's side. Would you like to?
I just want to thank the staff. I think they did a, a really good job in, in, in working through some of these issues that came up, uh, in our last meeting in September. Um, I, I'm glad to hear, uh, Councilmember Lentz, that you, uh, were able to talk with, um, Alex Karpowitz at the, uh, regional board. Um, a lot has been done out there and, uh, a lot is going to be done out there. I think one thing I want to leave you with tonight is Prologis has over 100 contamination sites that we're working on globally right now. We have successfully got, uh, gotten regulatory closure on over 100 in the last five years. And that's what we see happening on this site here. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I have a slip from Joel Diaz.
Good evening, Joel Diaz. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. You know, I, I first like to say, I, I appreciate, um, the effort to, to improve some of Brisbane's properties like this and these rundown buildings. And, and, you know, they, they are going to become an eyesore, and it, it's nice to think that people are out there trying to, you know, improve the area. And I'm not super happy about the freight forwarding concept. You know, I'd like to see something that would add to the community, you know, maybe add more revenue. I suspect there's a way for the city to maybe get some sort of special fee out of this. Um, but aside from the freight forwarding, I think that the contamination issue is, is a big problem. And I'd like to see that cleaned up. And this is a unique site. You know, if it was any other site that didn't have contamination, you know, it'd be a lot, I'd feel a lot better about it. And when, you know, I look at the, I looked at the community health and safety portion of the general plan, which is, um, according to the California Supreme Court, is the single most important planning document. And if we use this general plan to help us plan what to do with these contaminated areas, you know, it gives us some pretty clear policy directions on, on what to do with these properties. And, um, you know, Policy 172 says establish, establish that it is of the highest priority that contaminated lands in Brisbane be remediated. Under that same section, it says, "require private property owners to remediate contaminated lands consistent with state and federal requirements." So we've got to require the property owners to do this. And it's not, I don't think it's good enough that we, the state and, and other people do that, but we've got to require that it be done. Um, and then, and then it goes on to talk about, you know, before, um, you, you can grant an approval of a development project, we, we have to have, um, a remediation of the site has to first have been approved and adopted by, a plan for remediation of the site has to first been approved and adopted by the governing agencies. And we don't have that. So for, so it seems to me, we first, we got to have that before we can approve the project. Maybe we can consider it. But then later on, it says, in another Policy 174, it says, um, "you have to include those remediation requirements of that approved plan, um, in making determinations on land use designations and development applications." So there again, it seems like we need to have that, that information before we should do, according to the general plan. Um, and then finally, in the general plan, under 174B, it says, "condition all final approval of development projects on full compliance with these, with these orders," which we still don't have the completed orders. And so we don't, although it, it seems to suggest that it's probably going to be okay, you know, it might not be. And even if it is going to be okay and safe for the, for the suggested uses, um, according to the general plan, we need to require that they do it. And we need to understand what those, uh, the requirements for remediation are before we can even determine these land use designations. So it, it does seem like the cart's sort of before the horse a little bit. Um, and I do think that this is, it probably should be broken up into parcels. This probably shouldn't extend, these permitted uses shouldn't extend to other M1 districts because of the uncertainty for similar reasons, because it could be contaminated land, that we should really do, you know, deal with this one parcel at a time kind of thing. It seems like a little more organized that way. And then we can follow all of these policy requirements of the general plan in, in an orderly way, instead of just automatically, um, granting a use right for another potentially contaminated area. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Bussi?
Dennis Bussi, longtime resident. I didn't intend to speak, but what Joel did, it just is exactly what's something I read today from the Baylands organization. And I've circled one part of it, and it says, in regards to the lagoon, "the park space around the lagoon will include both preserve space and recreation, including an educational outdoor interpretive lab focused on the Baylands." That's great, man, but when's it going to start? This seems like an ideal time, as a condition you want to do something, start, bore a hole and tell us what's in it. But, uh, for what that's worth, I'm tired of hearing about it, hearing about it, hearing about it. We've got to start somewhere, man. Thank you.
Thank you.
I should say somewhere and sometime. And now's a good time.
Any other members of the public that would like to speak? I do have, besides the aforementioned letter from the Groundwater Protection Division, I have a letter from Kim Folian, who is supporting adding freight forward data center in food production to the M1 zone. And a letter from Michelle Salmon, who is very concerned about the, uh, twaling and other chemicals that are located on the site and that they have not been, um, fully investigated and reported on. So with that, should we close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have discussion. I think we have to do this in two, eh, when we get there, we'll need to do two parts for this.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah, I just have just a quick question. So, um, if the regional board, after doing the wrap, determines that, um, food preparation wasn't, um, well, they would, I guess, uh, provide different levels of cleanup pertaining to whatever use that the property owner wanted to do. So...
Or they have the option of deed restricting the property. If there's a particular use, the cleanup level doesn't support.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
I have a question of clarification as well. So, if, once the wrap is issued, and if the Water Board, it would be the Water Board, I guess, that imposes the deed restrictions, would it even be in the city's jurisdiction to make any further restrictions on the use of the property based on the toxics as discussed in the wrap?
No, it would not. The city, the deed restrictions that would be imposed, if any are imposed, would be placed on the property, and those would be limitations on the uses. To the extent those limitations were for a zoned use, then the owner or the tenant would not be able to, to use that use, notwithstanding the fact that the zoning ordinance would allow it because the deed restriction would preclude it.
Okay. So, yeah.
The cleanup on a property right now is, and I'm referring to Joel Diaz's testimony, that's right now being voluntarily done by VWR, and the property owner is involved in that, but VWR is the one that's responsible for it. And if they didn't volunteer, they would be mandated to do it. Is there a difference on level?
I think it's more a matter of how it was initiated. You know, how it came to be sort of known, the level of contamination. That's at least my understanding. So, we may have a different interpretation, but that was the fact that it was information that was not generated by the board from their own independent investigation. It was generated through investigations done by third parties and provided to the board, and that's what opened the case.
Yeah, okay. So, from what I understand, the larger building there has a real low level of contamination that could be remediated rather quickly, but there's some other stuff that further down the property that is really going to require a more intensive cleanup. So, in, maybe answering Joel's, I don't know if it's a question, but bringing up the general plan policy in regards to that, can you respond to that?
Well, I guess, you know, I'd argue this whole thing about Policy 174, include the remediation requirements of federal, state, local agencies in the process of making determinations on land use designations and development applications. One, we're not, you don't have a development application in front of you, so that's, part of it's not really applicable. Two is, this whole process is following the state established and determined procedure. So, what we're doing here is fully in compliance with the general plan intent. You follow the state regulatory requirements. You move forward, and that's really what's happening in this case.
Okay, all right. See, the attorney, you agree with that, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Sorry, John, I just wanted to get the lead.
Yeah, I have one question. You know, there are these three categories we're looking at, freight forwarding, data centers, and food processing. And some argument has been made by some of our residents that we should, you know, think very carefully about the food processing because there are some food processing possibilities that are rather odorous. And, and may even be, you know, incompatible with, you know, certainly on some parts of the site. So, we don't know for sure, but that's possible. And so, the question becomes, is that something, one, that we should bear concern about or worry about, or try to have some, a little more control over? What's the staff recommendation on that?
I think certainly, you know, when it was discussed at the Planning Commission, the idea that there could be a broad diversity in terms of what is covered by that, that category, and some, you know, you might not know that there's a, from the exterior, from odor, or from anything else, that there's that kind of business going on, and others could have the possibility for, for potential external impacts. And, you know, I think the commission, I understand where they were coming from on that. The other option, and we really haven't had a chance to develop what that would be, are, you know, are there certain performance standards we could apply about making sure that there's no odor that's detectable off the site? Or, you know, those would be the other way of dealing with that, is creating a permitted use with performance standards. And if that's something you want to consider for that particular use category, that's certainly an option. I think off-site odor is probably the most apparent and obvious to me, anyway. If there are other sort of considerations with, with food processing that you would be concerned about addressing, we could do that as well. But, you know, not having off-site detectable odor would seem to be something that's not necessarily terribly, you know, I think it's a fairly objective standard. It's not something that, that is arbitrary or subject to a lot of opinion. I think it is a pretty reasonable standard if you want to go that way.
Would applicant have a problem with that? That performance standard? Okay.
I'm ready for a discussion.
So, if I may, Ray, are you suggesting in moving freight forwarding as a permitted use?
Yeah, I'm personally comfortable with freight forwarding and data centers as permitted uses. Little bit concerned about the food processing for that one reason, anyway. And if we can build that in as a performance standard, then it would be permitted as long as it, you know, meets the performance standard. So, that's kind of how I would see it.
Right, it was only the Planning Commission that said they should be conditional uses? Am I correct? Right.
So, you know, one of the main issues for me, the last time we heard this, was the contamination, and I'm glad that we got the information that helped give greater clarity. It was helpful to have that conversation also with Ms. Karpowitz, and, you know, to understand that the reason why they're addressing the issue now is a lot because of Prologis wanting to purchase the property. And now, Univar is required by the Regional Board to do this work. It's comforting to know that the sampling that has been done appears to indicate that it's safe to do these industrial uses, which are before us to be permitted. But that, you know, ultimately, the wrap will put forth a plan to remediate the site, and that's the most important thing. We want to get that going. I think having someone like Prologis, who's interested in purchasing the property and wanting their site to be cleaned, is going to provide additional leverage, you know, sense of urgency to get the site cleaned, and I think that's a good thing. So, if that is a motion, Councilmember Miller, I would second it.
Okay.
I would like
We have to wait for the mayor. Please.
Well, you know, I think that I'm probably going against the tide here, but I'm really uncomfortable with extending these uses to the area on industrial way, that we don't have as willing of remediation, as willing of group to declare what the toxins are there. We know that is a contaminated site also, and they're not being required to clean up anything at that site. And we're willing to change the uses at that site on industrial. And that makes me quite nervous when, you know, the eventual Baylands plan could be another two, five, 10, 20, 50 years before something happens out there. And we're going to be stuck with these permitted uses instead of a conditional use. What worries me on the VWR site itself is that we're we're making, we're thinking of making permitted uses out of buildings that we know would need to be remodeled for whatever the use is as the interim use. We know that the asphalt will need to be broken to do even the mildest of remediation, but we don't know the extent of that remediation that's needed. And so, it, it really seems that we're putting the cart before the horse when we don't know what the remediation process is going to be. And I will have to say, I've had a conversation, and I believe it was with the same woman for the, from the Regional Water Board, and she came to a
She'll be there on the 17th.
BB CAG meeting, and she was talking about the Kinder Morgan site. And she said that the water ponding on the VWR, on the Kinder Morgan site was leaves disintegrating, and that that water was safe to drink, that was sitting there ponding on top of the, on top of the Kinder Morgan site. It was safe enough for her kids to drink that water that was sitting there. And somehow, that just seemed like we were putting our heads in the sand that there was no toxins there, and that everything was okay, because that was sort of the company line, or the state line, that we're just going to say everything's, everything's good. And maybe it is all good, but I would really like to have the information of what the toxins are there before we change the use in that area and an area that we're not even studying, that aren't even on the maps.
Well, given what the city attorney said, I don't see what difference that information would make, because it doesn't seem like it's our role to make a determination on that issue.
I think, I think it's our role.
If there's determined, if the wrap shows that there's toxics out there, then the Water Board can issue the deed restrictions.
If they go for, go forward with it, this is still voluntary.
That's not, that's not the case. Now that this has been established, Univar has to clean the site, and they have to do, they have to prepare the wrap, and then they will have to follow through on whatever that remediation plan is. Whether or not Prologis moved forward or not, they initiated it, but now it's, it's in motion.
And, and, I mean, we know there's toxins out on the Baylands, but yet they're not being forced to clean it up. We know there's toxins there, so, okay.
Yes, and Ms. Karpowitz said, yeah, there are some some bad toxins at the VWR site, but the wrap has not been completed to put forth the remediation plan to deal with that. But at this current time, the sample, sampling that has been done has determined that the site is safe.
Without breaking the ground or the slab, it is safe.
Yes, right. And then there'll be a remediation plan to, to deal with that. So. I think moving forward with these guys is going to get the site cleaned faster. And I would prefer that the site have someone operating there, rather than it just being off-balled. And like Gloria said, I don't think that we, as a body, have that type of leverage, so.
Or if we want to retain some control, we do a conditional use permit. But I'd kind of like to hear more about maybe staff's take on why their recommendation is different than the Planning Commission's.
For the three categories, or?
Yes.
Data centers, that was a new use, had, was not in the zoning code anywhere, so it was a new use. And the issue that the Planning Commission raised was, well, if it was going to be very energy-intensive, then they would want a conditional use permit process to, to look at that. The freight forwarding was traffic-based, and I think we've addressed the traffic-related issues here. And the food was based on what we just discussed with Councilmember Miller about off-site impacts related to odor. And, and so, again, we have another tool to, by a performance standard, to deal with that particular concern.
Okay. And so, if we approve this, these as permitted uses, and one of them was put out there as the use, and then the Water Board said, no, that's not allowed, we're going to put a deed restriction in place, would that affect that, that current use? Would they have to stop their operations?
I think maybe the first thing we kind of talked about is, when you come about land use, the Regional Board doesn't look at it like the city does. They're not parsing a freight forwarder from a R and D use. What they're typically looking at are categories of land use, and what they're looking at are sensitive land uses that they're typically deed restricting. I'm not familiar with any case where the Regional Board has taken a land use category of a range of industrial uses and said, "these industrial uses are fine and these aren't." So, we're talking about literally entirely different categories of land use that they deed restrict out. So, I'm not familiar with any case where they're parsing between industrial or retail, or even, that's not how they, at least in my understanding, that's not how they view land use. And then the city attorney may speak to the other issue about the.
Councilmember Lou, I'm going to ask you to repeat your question.
My question was, so if we approve this, allowing, permitting, allowing those three categories as permitted uses, not conditional uses, and then the Regional Water Board found that there were some toxics at the site that required a deed restriction, if any of those uses were already in place, would the property owner then have to stop? were already in place, would the property owner then have to stop and change their operations? Like, say it's, say they decide to put a food production out there, and for whatever reason, that's something the water board thinks is not okay, although John says that they don't use those types of categories, but if it is a category that touches upon what the water board says is not safe, then what would happen at that point?
At that point, if the, if the water board put a deed restriction on the property, whoever uses the property would have to comply with the deed restriction, even if the, it was the restricted use imposed by the water board was otherwise allowable under the zoning ordinance. So, in your, in your case, if there was a tenant out there who was doing food processing, and that was consistent with the zoning ordinance, and the water board restricted that use, then the tenant would need to stop. The water board would, in all likelihood, come, issue a citation if that didn't happen, and issue enforcement proceedings, and certainly, if none of that happened, the city could enforce those. So, but that having been said, it's not, I'm not, I'm not at all clear that the water board would issue a deed restriction that would preclude food processing as opposed to a deed restriction in, as to housing or schools or daycares or hospitals or other areas, which are typically where those deed restrictions tend to be.
Thank you.
Well, the, I think the traffic study for, at least for me, kind of really dealt with the freight forwarding issue. I know they're not popular just by name in Brisbane. But I'm okay with that. The data centers, that doesn't seem, other than what the planning commission says, from an intensive use, I mean, that building is probably pretty well primed for solar panels too, looking at it. And Ray, I think with the stipulation that you're asking for in the food production and distribution, I would be okay with that, yeah.
I agree.
The one thing I wanted to add in reference to the traffic, so that everybody knows we're aware of the problem, the one intersection that gets into trouble, as John mentioned, is Bay Shore and San Bruno. That one does go below the level of service that's set in the general plan, and people already have problems with that intersection, and this really, you know, makes it worse. But what makes it worse? It's all the cumulative traffic that's going to be, you know, coming up and down Bay Shore, of which this is a part. And so, one of the things we need to address is to do a better job with that intersection. And I think one of the instructions to the staff, which is in addition to this particular request, is that we see if we can do something about improving the level of service at San Bruno and Bay Shore. And one of the things that I had suggested, and it's under consideration, I think, is that if you come down San Bruno, you know, you get down the bottom there, and if you got the commute bus wanting to make a left turn, which they do, and it doesn't allow you to go by them on the right, because it's blocked off, at least if you follow the, the way in which it's marked, some people don't, but if you do, then the traffic already starts backing up, because there are certain times of the day when getting out of there and turning left is, you know, because it's just a stop sign, you know, and the Bay Shore is, you know, free flow, so you got a problem already, and this is really going to exacerbate that problem. So, one of the things we could do is look at that configuration there, which would help right away. And the other is, you know, maybe at some point, you know, we need to think about a traffic light there, even though it isn't, quote, "meeting the threshold by the engineering standards," but we know that in terms of, you know, community need, we certainly need to think about doing something about that intersection.
That'd be interesting, an interesting study, because I know that if traffic would be coming out of the former site, that would stop all the flow coming from the north to the south until that traffic got out, and you would have a buffer there other than stuff coming from south to the north.
You're right, it might slow things down.
It would create a buffer, so be interesting to see what they come up with on that.
Right, right, yeah, I don't know what the solution is, but obviously, we got a problem.
The other place we have definite problems on level of surface is getting onto the 101 at just south of town off Bay Shore.
Right.
That backs up in the mornings.
I know, I mean, it's, you know, everybody's using Bay, good old Bay Shore now, for some reason, I don't know what's really going on there, but it's become very popular.
Yeah, I agree.
All right.
So, anyway, my motion is in place.
Can you repeat your motion?
So, the idea was that we move ahead with the, for what is now the M1 designation, which I hope we're going to change, and have the permitted uses of the three that are requested, namely freight forwarding, data centers, and then food processing, but on the food processing, add the performance standard that John talked about, so we don't get odors drifting into the nearby community that are, you know, vile. And some food processing, as we know from a couple of cases, can be pretty vile. So, anyway, that's kind of my motion. And of course, it's introducing this as a change to the zoning ordinance, right?
And I had seconds, so...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
And then the second thing I think we want to do is ask the staff to bring back some way in which we can instruct the planning commission to start the process of bringing these areas into conformance with the general plan, zoning designation. And when we do that, we can look at the kind of issue that Terry raised too, because I think that's a valid issue, and so, we can do that as a package and have that on the next agenda. So, anyway, that's my motion.
Second.
I think we already did.
I think we already did that and voted, correct?
No.
No.
It's different.
Okay, so you're, I guess I quit paying attention.
That's bringing the zoning into conformance with the general plan, so making it TC, really.
Okay, but we can't, we can't vote on that.
We can also look at whether that, the implications for the other TC site at the same time.
We can't, we can't vote on that, that's not on our agenda, correct?
Sure we can, we talked about that, that's a part of this whole thing. It was in the conversation last time, and it was just presented by the staff as a second part of this.
There, you're instructing staff to bring it back to you so that you can then take action next time.
Right.
But we're not voting on it.
No, no, we're just instructing.
Okay, I thought you said that was your motion.
No, 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 following what John recommended.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what the second was, was for that motion, too.
What's that?
That's what the second was.
Yeah, he's seconded.
We don't need to vote on it.
Yeah, this is a second motion in reference to what we're doing.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to vote.
We're not, we're not late, we're early in the day.
We need to vote.
Vote, yeah, it's a, it's a motion to instruct the staff, so we need, it's moved and seconded, and all we need to do is vote on it.
Yeah, we're instructing staff to bring it back at the next meeting, that's all we're doing, we're formalizing it.
All right.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I assume, but I don't see it on here to be able to bring that forward to vote on.
No, that was the second part of the recommendation for that.
Okay. I think that we need a motion to adjourn if we don't have to do any of the rest. And we have oral communications too, which I think we do have to...
That you got to do, yeah.
Do.
Do the do-do.
Is there any members of the public that wants to speak on something we haven't discussed? Seeing no requests, I would like to make...
So, move.
Ask to close in, in memory of Johnny Gomez, Barbara Vernest...
Vernest.
Vernest, and Nino Mizetti.
And Barbara is actually Bonnie and Cy Boligos' niece. She grew up here in town.
So, we got a motion, and we got a second?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm sorry you didn't get to give your talk about the airport thing.
Oh, you know, that meeting got postponed, so...